Well, thanks. I'm glad to hear that. That's encouraging.
Yeah.
It's getting too close.
Yeah. Pedro, your background's doing the same thing mine was doing when I first logged on. I don't know why it does that sometimes. Your background?
So I'm in the same room, same lighting, but for some reason, when I clicked on, everything was really bright around me. My image came out, but everything was bright around me. So I figured, let me try it. And this is the best I've ever gotten it to look.
Yeah.
With that backdrop. I don't know if I should keep it or...
I don't understand. I keep switching the same background. I've had it on two other laptops and it won't work, but this one, which is Scott's work computer, is the only one it works on. So I don't know if it's because he has like a more powerful computer or something, like better graphics or something, but it's the only one I can do it on.
Everybody else is running the same laptop, so I mean, it shouldn't be an IT thing.
I'm on a different laptop. I'm using my...
Although, you know what? I see, I'm leaning up and you can see my chair behind me. So there is something. I don't know. It's weird.
Pedro, it's actually lighting. You need lighting in front of you and behind you. Just getting that magic light is a little tricky.
Yeah, like I said, it's the same lighting I've ever used. I'm in the same room, same lights. I don't have lights in front of me. I actually have another monitor that's behind the laptop to try to help light it. But it's the same thing, just this time, it all come up brighter, everything behind me. So I don't know. Just look at the draw, I guess.
Jeff's got the Minnie Mouse voice now.
Not hearing you at all. Jeff, there's a sound issue.
Jeff, you may have to come out or get out and then come back in the meeting to have it refreshed.
Is that better?
Much better.
Yes.
All right. So, quick question, just to get this out of the way. Which which screen do you see? The full presentation or the one with the second page?
Just see the title screen. See the Windows border or anything, just the page we should be.
I see the whole presentation screen.
Perfect. Yep, I got them on the right monitor then. Thank you.
Well, now I see the whole thing.
Right now it's switched.
Yeah.
All right, got it.
Okay, sorry, I was doing some last minute adjustments on my screen as well. It looks like it's start time. But as we have done in the past meetings regarding the Zoom, before I do the commencement, I'd like to have the town clerk read a statement about how this is being used.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to go over a couple logistics for those participants who may not be very familiar with Zoom. Just as a reminder, your main controls are on the left-hand side of your computer screen. These are your audio and video controls. Please make sure to keep yourself muted when you're not talking and to keep your video on as we are streaming live to YouTube. Next, I wanted to go over some guidelines as to how board members are going to participate in the meeting. The mayor will be calling on each board member individually to provide comments and votes. If you would like to speak at any point during the meeting, please raise your hand. Please be mindful of your background when you raise your hand, as you might have to bring your hand forward so that we can see it. Also, if we are in the middle of a presentation and you are raising your hand but not being called on, please feel free to speak up. Most importantly, we want to make sure that the board members are able to participate in this meeting fully. So if you experience any technical difficulties, please text me so that we can suspend the discussion. Next, we need to take the roll call. Please indicate if you are present. Mayor Ronald Pappas.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Brenda McMillan.
Present.
Commissioner Ann Simpson.
Present.
Commissioner Tracy Westlock.
Present.
Commissioner Pedro Maury.
Present.
Thank you. All members are present. Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you.
Great. Thank you, Melody, for allowing us to do that. At this time, I'd like to call the regular meeting of Board of Commissioners of Town of Waxahau, August 11, 2020, to order. And with that, if you would please then stand for our pledge of allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence. And if Nick's got the flag going, ah, boy, good song. All right, here we go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, everybody. Appreciate that. All right, at this time, we're going to move down to adoption of the agenda, and I am going to ask for one. If anybody's got any comments or changes to the agenda, and I also have one. So open up to everybody first. Are there any changes to the agenda from anybody else and the commissioners? They say none. I have a request, and I'd like to ask the commissioners for a motion to add an item to the agenda. It's pertaining to the YMCA and basically the myths and the perceptions and the facts. So may I have a motion, please?
So moved.
So.
All in favor? Commissioner Maury?
That'll be an aye.
Great. Commissioner Westlock?
Aye.
Commissioner Simpson?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Town McMillan?
Aye.
Very good. So we will add this under the presentation section. That's section E. So at that point in time, I will do what I do. Very good. And we're going to move to the public comments. And again, I'm going to, public comments pertaining to the items on the agenda. If I could ask the town clerk to make a statement, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We have received no other comments pertaining to this agenda except for the public hearing items. We do have general comments, which will be read during the second public comment section.
Okay, very good. Thank you for that. So with that, then we can now move down to the consent agenda. And so I'm going to ask for, are there any changes to the consent agenda? Anybody requesting? Saying none, we'll go to a roll call vote for approval of the consent agenda. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Very good. We'll start the roll call vote again. Mayor Pro Town McMillan.
Aye.
Commissioner Simpson?
Aye.
Commissioner Westlock?
Aye.
And Commissioner Maury?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you. The consent agenda is adopted as published. We have an item now under recognitions, and I'm going to turn that over. It's Parks and Recreation Department, five-year service award. And again, we have the lovely Ms. Dina presenting to us. So Dina, I'm going to turn this one over back to you.
Awesome. I have a press. There it is. We would like to recognize Ms. Joan Rhodes for her five-year anniversary with the town, and she's a great asset to the Park and Rec Department. And as you see with Ms. Lisa there, she's just a joy to work with as well. So we'd like to congratulate her on her five-year anniversary.
Very good. Well, if she's on board with us there, certainly congratulations to the five-year service award. That gets to be quite an accomplishment these days. So appreciate her service for our town and everything that she does in support of all of the guys there in Parks and Rec. Any other special comments by the commissioners? Okay, well, we can then close that out. Thank you very much, Dina. And I'm sure that maybe you get some other pictures online or post those pictures online so people can see that she received the award.
Yes, sir. Bye.
Very good. All right, at this time, we are going to move down to the presentation side, which I'm going to try to help people understand things. As I said earlier, sometimes it's, social media can be a little bit, maybe I'll call it the devil's workshop on this kind of stuff with a bunch of misinformation. And we want to see if we can clear that up for you, again, with the benefit of both the Y and ourselves. So let me start out with this. In December of 2015, the Town of Waxahau and the YMCA of Greater Charlotte entered into what we now know as a joint use and scheduling agreement to develop two properties, two separate properties, by the way, in the Kirton area on Providence Road in Waxahau. Amid the COVID-19 pandemic and current economic conditions, the town and the YMCA mutually and amicably agreed to release each other from the obligation set forth in the original document, thus terminating the agreement. The Town of Waxahau and the YMCA of Greater Charlotte remain committed to providing community programs that build healthy minds, bodies, and spirit. The YMCA of Greater Charlotte will continue to serve the Town of Waxahau and Union County through their day camp programs, homeschool programming, and a 21st century learning grant in partnership with Union County Public Schools. Now, with all that said, let me try to inform people on kind of how this deal happened, how it went down, and what was, what's real and what's not. The original agreement set forth that the town, in conjunction with the YMCA's purchase of their property along the roadway there on Providence Road at Kirton Shopping Center, they had purchased their property, and the town's responsibility was to purchase the property behind there. And both of them independently were going to be developed by these separate entities. The YMCA was going to develop and build their property, and the town was going to develop and build their respective property. And so that joint use agreement originally called for a large facility. It's actually, the anticipation was, by the document, the anticipation was to allow up to 100,000 square feet. And, but initially, the YMCA was going to construct their premises, starting out with at least 10,000 square feet. They didn't have a pool in this one, and a parking lot reasonably accessible by pedestrians to the town park via the joint access. The phasing of construction would be based on the YMCA's ability to fund, but the initial improvements must have been completed within a four-year and six-month timeframe from obtaining necessary state, federal, and governmental approvals to constructing the flood plain, the floodway, or flood zone areas. And I understand that they did get that during this timeframe. The YMCA was then required to substantially complete and include facilities of at least 50,000 square feet within 10 years and six months from the effective date, the original date of the agreement, in 2015. Along the way, the YMCA was also to give us reporting on their financial success, on progress. The first one was sometime in 2017, essentially almost two years after the original agreement. At 2017, they were to report a confirmation of receiving 35% of the funds necessary to start the YMCA. And in conjunction with that, a year later, in 2018, the YMCA was to provide the town with a standard of completion that secured 65% of the funds necessary. We all know that certainly there are financial constraints to every project that comes, both ours and the YMCA's. But in the middle of those two reporting periods, the town received a letter from Todd Tivitts, who is the president of the YMCA. This was on November 1st, 2017. And in that letter, it essentially describes some of the conditions that were, that the YMCA was up against, and they were going to have some difficulties in there. In fact, at the very end of it, as it said, stated, "As you know, the YMCA, the goal is to execute a fiscally responsible strategy which will enable our YMCA to serve the citizens of Waxahau for many years to come. However, we do want to alert the town that due to unforeseen circumstances out of the YMCA's control, the YMCA may not be able to meet its obligations as specified in the agreement as it currently exists, and the town should plan accordingly." And that was in November, November 1st of 2017. About a year and a half later, the town responded to that letter, and the letter resulted in what we now know as the First Amendment to the Joint Use and Scheduling Agreement. And in that First Amendment, there were several conditions. One of the major ones was that the town, or the YMCA, was relieved of its responsibility to provide financials to the town. And again, these are documents that negotiated by prior town manager and prior board. What happened as well on that is that there was not going to be a guarantee of the building size. It was going to be on an as-needed-as-grow basis, so the initial building would only be 10,000 square feet, scaled down from the original anticipated 100,000 square feet, scaled down again to 50,000 square feet, and now scaled down to 10. And again, no pool in that. So it became apparent that the YMCA was probably struggling a little bit with their fundraising efforts. And so we had some reporting milestones on our side of the agreement that we needed to have a discussion with the Y. So in January of this year, I called a meeting with the YMCA, and I had Mayor Pro Town McMillan sit in with me, and I had Commissioner Pedro Maury sit in with me, along with the now-town manager, Jeff Wells, and the town clerk, Melody Schuler. And with that, we had two representatives from the YMCA, Steve Bowers and Ben Penniger. And we discussed a few things about the milestones, because we certainly had some concerns whether or not both parties could actually execute. Because what this joint use agreement was providing for is not only did the YMCA have to build their facility, but that joint use and scheduling agreement required the town to spend nearly $10 million to complete their end of the negotiations, to complete their end of the agreement. And that was going to become very difficult. And as we've now learned, as we move forward, that the town's borrowing capacity was now in the neighborhood of $3.5 million. And we were concerned about that going in, on whether or not certainly we could meet our end of the obligations, and certainly wanted to ask the YMCA, since they were relieved of their reporting responsibilities, we want to check in with them to make sure that they were able to perform. What had transpired after that is a few other comments and dialogues and some meetings between the now-town manager and the Y, and then a couple of meetings that I had with Mr. Bowers and myself. And we came to the conclusion that, you know, as far as the town's responsibility on this matter, it would, we would really struggle to be able to do this with any available cash that we might have and our borrowing capacity. And if, in fact, that the Y was not going to be able to go forward with their end of the agreement, we needed to know that now, so we wouldn't take everything we had and put it into a couple of free soccer fields and a parking lot and then have no Y. Hard dialogue to have. And I think that we've all helped each other come to the conclusions that it was probably not in the best interest at this time, on this project, at this location, for the Y and the town to continue literally kicking the can down the road and hoping and praying that something might happen. Because if you look at the cost of the building, for the Y anyway, the Y had shared with us that they estimated the construction costs for the building were about $400 a foot. So anyone can do the math on it. If you start with the bigger building at 100,000 square feet, that's $40 million. They were $40 million short of that goal. If you look at the 20,000-foot building, you get another number. And certainly, when you go down to the 10,000-foot building at 400 bucks a foot, you've got a $4 million spend minimally. And again, I think they realized that certainly with the pandemic hitting us and their ability to perform, if they haven't performed in six years, that the likelihood of them going forward might be pretty slim. And so we had asked them if they were able to raise funds for the building, and the answer was no, they had not. And we've, it was, it was actually a very, very good discussion with the Y to have us partner with them in discussions, some very difficult dialogue that went on. But at the end of the day, we both realized that the best thing for both parties to do was to terminate the joint use and scheduling agreement. So we met with the Y again. We had some comments and a draft. We had their attorneys draft the termination agreement. That termination agreement was first signed by the YMCA after approval on their board. That was on July 8. And then we subsequently then put it on our consent agenda, because that's actually how the project came to the town in the first place. We put it on our consent agenda and agreed to do this. Now, we're not in the business of kicking our partners when they're down. It's a difficult time out there for everybody involved. And my agreement with the YMCA was to make sure that if we did anything with respect to an announcement about this, that we would do it with the joint statement that actually I read at the beginning of this commentary. So we want to, you know, take into consideration a lot of the emotions, that some of the townspeople might have had certain perceptions on what the, actually what the deal was. And certainly, these documents are public documents, are available, if anybody would want to access them, and they're available. But the short story is, is that it was still in the best interest for us not to perform. Doesn't mean that this kind of agreement might not come together another time, another place, but this one, like some projects, just weren't going to happen. The interesting part along the way during our conversations with the Y is I received a phone call from a certain individual, Mr. Tommy Hall. Mr. Tommy Hall, which his family was the namesake of this development, and he asked me, he said, hey, Mayor, you know, what's going on with the Y? And so he and I had some conversations about everything that I've just exposed to you here. And I think he was just unfortunately disappointed. He had given money to the Y, a $2 million donation to the Y in 2008, 2009. My guess is that he probably split it on tax years, but again, that's up to him. But it was a $2 million donation in 2008, 2009, and here we were today with unfortunately, you know, the inability to move forward. So again, I hope that everybody understands that, you know, this was not something that was clandestine. We are being very respectful and mindful of our then-partners, the YMCA. We look forward actually to doing another project with them sometime soon. But I think that going forward, I think they all understand that they would not be able to do the deal, and there was no reason to us to go forward either. So with that, I leave you with the presentation. And thank you very much, board, for allowing me this time to hopefully shed some light to everybody out there that might not have had the same understanding. All right, at this point, we're going to move on to the public hearing section. And so I'm going to ask that we have a motion to open the public hearing. So may I have a motion to do that, please?
Hello.
So moved. Okay, we have a motion to open the public hearing. Roll call vote, please. Mayor Pro Town?
Aye.
Commissioner Simpson? Commissioner Westlock?
Aye.
And Commissioner Maury?
Aye.
Very good. All right, so we're open for the public hearing on the first item, annexation of town property on 4220 Waxahau Marvin Road, which is contiguous to the existing municipal boundaries. The information on this, I'd like to turn it back over to our town manager and our town clerk for a couple of statements. Town manager, you've got the floor. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I will turn over the beginning of this to our town clerk to announce our public comment period for this.
Thank you, Jeff. So we've received public comments for the public hearing on annexation petition 18-224. And so the public comment portion of this hearing will remain open for 24 hours after the hearing has closed. Any comments received will be forwarded to the Board of Commissioners and will be incorporated into the public record. And that's it.
Thank you, Melody, and good evening. So your first public hearing tonight is in regards to the annexation of 4220 Waxahau Marvin Road. And this property is 17.4 acres. It's located at the intersection of Waxahau Marvin Road and Kensington Drive. This is town-owned property. It was purchased by the town in June 2020, so just two months ago. The intended use for the property is a public services/parks and rec building that will be built on the western side of the property, and the remainder of the property would be in open for future considerations whenever that time comes. So the property is a donut hole property, meaning that it is completely surrounded by the town limits. So the probable history behind that is it's been owned by the county for some time. There's been really no reason for the county to request annexation of this property, of course, until now, that we have purchased it for our own governmental use. So the Board of Commissioners adopted the resolution of intent at your July 28 meeting. And one of the follow-ups we will have to do is if the town Board of Commissioners does annex the property, we will have to assign a zoning district at a subsequent meeting, once the annexation is complete, which we will do following up in September. And your staff recommendation is to approve the annexation ordinance, which will be at your August 25th Board of Commissioners meeting. Begin, again, because of what Town Clerk Schuler mentioned, that we have to keep the public comment period open for 24 hours after the duration of this meeting due to state law on remote meetings. So I made this particular item short and sweet, and I'll certainly be happy to answer any questions that anybody on the board may have. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Jeff. And open it up to any questions that the board has right now. I'm seeing any hands. I don't see everybody up there yet. Be vocal, because my screen, let me move my screen over a little bit for you. I don't see anybody's hand up for a question. So with that, I will ask for a motion to close this portion of the public hearing.
So moved.
Very good. Any discussion? All right, roll call vote, please, for the motion. Mayor Pro Town?
Aye.
Commissioner Simpson?
Aye.
Commissioner Maury? Commissioner Morey?
Aye.
Commissioner Westler?
Aye.
Very good. You've got everybody. Thanks, Al. All right. So this part of the public hearing, uh, item number one is now closed. We're going to move on to item number two. I have a motion to open the public hearing for general rezoning, uh, Broad Street Homes, Inc., uh, resolution, uh, RZ 0102285-2020. Uh, at this point, uh, I do have a motion to open this public hearing.
So moved.
Very good. Any discussion? Any comments? Okay, at this point, roll call vote, please. Mayor Pro Tem?
Aye.
Commissioner Simpson?
Aye.
Commissioner Westler?
Aye.
And Commissioner Morey?
Aye.
Very good. We are open, uh, on the public hearing on this item. Uh, so I have, uh, comments, certainly one by the town manager first on the presentation, uh, along with Madison, but, uh, the town clerk would need to make a statement. So I will allow Jeff to manage that process.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll have, uh, town clerk Schuler again make the, uh, announcement for public comments for this public hearing.
Thank you, Jeff. Uh, so we've received public comments for the public hearing on petition RZ-010285-2020. And the public comment portion of this hearing will remain open for 24 hours after the hearing has closed. Any additional comments received will be forwarded to the Board of Commissioners and will continue to be incorporated into the public record. And that's it.
Awesome. So thank you, Melody. Good afternoon, everybody. Hope everyone is doing well. Um, so I am here before you to present the Broad Street Homes general rezoning request. So this is a request by Broad Street Homes Incorporated for a general town rezoning slash map amendment from R3, our single-family residential zoning district, to UN, urban neighborhood, one of our downtown zoning districts. And so these two properties are located at 316 Providence Street. And then the second property is located along Washington Street. Now, we'll say for 316 North Providence Street, the parcel has since been subdivided, but has not received a new tax parcel ID number from Union County. Um, so again, this is a general rezoning request from R3 to UN. So this shows the property locations. Um, you can see here, uh, one parcel is located along North Providence Street here, uh, with the back end of it divided by this, uh, like we, we like to call Paper Street Right-of-Way. Um, and so that shows, see if I can get it to switch over. So there's parcel one, and then parcel two is this more northern parcel here, in which you can see again, this parcel is split by this Paper Street Right-of-Way. So the rezoning itself is east of this Paper Street Right-of-Way. Of this parcel here is on R3, and the parcel below it, uh, which is also zoned R3. And the combined acreage of this is roughly five acres. So this just shows the general aerial of the, um, two properties being rezoned or proposed to be rezoned. And so you can see here along North Providence Street, this property with the house and the pool and the existing pond has since been subdivided from this rear smaller rectangle piece that is divided by the, um, the Paper Street Right-of-Way. Again, showing which one is the parcel one, and then which pieces are part of the parcel two.
Can I ask you a question real quick?
Sure, absolutely.
Commissioner Westler, when you say Paper Street Right-of-Way, what exactly does that mean? Um, I was under the impression, looking at this map, this was some type of easement that you can't build a road on. So are you saying, does this mean that you can build a road on? Or what does that mean exactly?
Well, I think it was intended at some point for the town to come through and, and build a road through this area. And so you can kind of see here, um, right here at this Price, Price Street Extension. Um, this is also an additional Paper Street Right-of-Way where, where the town could one day, um, go through and, and build a street for additional connectivity. So it's, it's just a road that was, that was never built, um, by the town.
And?
Can I interject here?
Sure.
What it is, it would have been on an old subdivision plat dedicated as a, a street right-of-way, but it has never been accepted by the town for maintenance nor added to the town's road system. It just exists on a plat. It doesn't exist in reality.
Yeah. That's correct. Thank you for the clarification. So moving on with, um, the existing properties around these proposed rezoning area. Um, to the north, you have the Southbrook subdivision, currently zoned C U R M 1. To the east, you have additional residential properties zoned R3 and R4. To the south are, um, properties zoned R4, UN, and then one parcel zoned Neighborhood Mixuse or N M X. And finally, to the west of these properties are additional residents in the UN district. Um, and then some in the, the town center, uh, downtown zoning district. So as it relates to our future land use plan, our 2016 comp plan policy bridge shows this property designated as what we call the G4 Downtown Residential. And so allowed uses, um, per our future land use call for detached, single-family cottages, duplexes, and townhomes. And it calls for a density of, of four to 20 dwelling units, um, per acre, but also depending on the site characteristics. So the, the requested zoning of UN is consistent with this G4 Downtown Residential designation. And so you can kind of see, um, along Washington Street, Miller Drive, and North Providence Street, they all have this very similar designation. So the proposed zoning, you can see here, um, switched to UN. Uh, UN is a district, uh, that consists predominantly of medium-density residential on a urban fabric. Um, it entails a variety of building types, such as single-family homes, townhomes, and duplexes. So this is a, just a kind of comparison of the lot requirements, um, as it is for R3 and UN. Um, so you can see, one of the, the differences I'd like to point out is, is the front setback. So a building would be need to, would need to be set back 30 feet in the R3, single-family residential zoning district. And in UN, that is shifted to, to six to 24 feet at a max. And you, you can kind of see that difference too with, with the rear setback. And then also with the, the lot coverage being 10% more allowed for impervious surface. So at our July planning board meeting, the planning board voted unanimously, unanimously, uh, for a favorable recommendation to you guys all today. Um, the planning board also voted unanimously to send a favorable recommendation of the reasonableness and consistency statement. So as for planning staff, uh, staff recommends approval of the proposed general rezoning, RZ 010285-2020. And the UN zoning district is suitable for this property. Um, it is keeping with our G4 Downtown Residential designated as guided by our 2016 comp plan. The district is compatible with the future land use and the planning goals of the town. And the properties, uh, proposed for the rezoning, the adjacent properties of them are, are zoned at, at the same residential density as, as this. And so, um, this is just a snapshot of, from two weeks from now. Um, so the requested action for, for August 25th will be either a motion to approve or deny, and also a vote on the reasonableness and consistency statement. And so the requested action tonight after this presentation and the applicant speaks, um, is to close the public hearing. And then this is just your consistency statement. And I am, um, available for, for questions and comments. And, um, so I know the, the applicant is also here and has a, um, slideshow presentation that I'll pull up real quick if Nick or Matt can move, um, Chris Hansen and then Mason Greason forward. Can you guys see that? Okay. So I'll give a, a second or two for, for Chris Hansen or, uh, for Mason Greason.
Sure. Hey, good evening, everybody. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Fantastic. Well, again, first of all, my name is Chris Hansen. I'm with Impact Development. And, uh, I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Broad Street Homes. Um, Madison, thank you again for your, your detail and thorough presentation. I, I certainly appreciate it. If you could move on to the second slide, please. Uh, I wanted to kind of first, uh, start further by, uh, elaborating more on the parcels that we're looking to rezone in relation to the parcels that we have assembled for this, uh, for this project. So what do you have on the screen, uh, that's shaded in blue, is the parcels that we have assembled that are already zoned UN. Um, again, that's consistent with the project that we want, what we want to do here. The, uh, the adjoining parcels that in between our project and North Province are also zoned UN. And, uh, the, the parcel which we intend to use as the entrance is also currently zoned UN. Below, which shading in yellow, uh, represents the two parcels that are again up for the conventional rezoning uh, that Madison, uh, just reviewed, uh, a short time earlier. And as you can see, uh, the potential sites that are up for rezoning represent about 30% of our overall project. So even though, uh, again, what, what we're looking to rezone is, uh, again, a smaller percentage of our overall project, and it's a conventional rezoning. You know, I feel we owe it to the public and the commissioners, as well as the mayor, to kind of further elaborate what we plan to do with this site, give as many details as we can, and hopefully address concerns of, of the public, as well as the, uh, the commissioners here tonight. So I want to start by just running through kind of some high-level details of the project. So Madison, if you could, just move to the next slide.
Sure.
So currently, right now, we are, we are finalizing the site plan, um, for this project. And one of the first steps is always making sure that the, that we have the proper zoning. As I mentioned previously, those two parcels that we're looking to rezone, you really kind of fulfill and add to the, um, again, to their total assemblage. The site is roughly 10 acres. And what we intend to build on the site is roughly 65 to 75 town home units. Again, which is consistent with the land use plan, um, that Madison just went over. These units will be two to three stories. They'll have garages. It's approximately a 10-minute walk to the, uh, Waxahaw shops and restaurants. And we intend this to really be a home for empty nesters, young professionals, and really everyone in between. Uh, next slide, please. I want to talk briefly about our, our project timeline. Um, we hope that zoning will be approved, those two parcels, uh, again, end of, uh, August and kind of, pardon me, end of September, pardon me. After the zoning approval, we really begin the site work, engineering and design. That process takes about two months, uh, with our engineer Mason Greason, who's on with me as well with, uh, land design. Then of course, once it's designed, that, that project is submitted to Waxahaw staff, Union County Public Works, uh, for approval on, on our site. And that process is typically about a six-month process to have full, uh, full approval. Shortly thereafter, permits are issued and then as impacted as the development side of this, uh, project, we will begin our site work. Site work on this project is about an eight-to, eight-month to nine-month, uh, timeframe. At that point, vertical construction and sales of this project will commence. And a site, a project of this size really is about a one-year, uh, to 14-month, um, timeframe to complete the project. And if, next slide, please. And, you know, one thing I mentioned in our, our previous presentation to the planning board, that's worth noting is that, uh, I'm a Waxahaw resident. My business partner, Ty Matthews, lives in Waxahaw. And the builder, Broad Street Homes, also lives in Waxahaw. Ty, who's, I, I believe he's here as well. He's kind of a unique bird. He's a native, uh, which is kind of hard to find these days. He and his father built houses and developed land in Waxahaw, including neighborhoods such as Magnolia Ridge and Ashton Manor. My first visit to Waxahaw was in 1996. And I remember vividly my father explaining to me that Waxahaw, or part of that Providence Road will be extended and widened to four lanes and run all the way into downtown Waxahaw. And, uh, I remember that vividly every time I try to turn on Providence Road. So I say that because despite, you know, the added congestion that, uh, Waxahaw has seen over the years, is that we all still love living here and raising our families here. This growth has allowed new restaurants, as new businesses to flourish, all of which adds the charm and the desirability of, of Waxahaw. The fact is people want to move here and they want to experience Waxahaw, just like we all do. And of course, with that, with, uh, the influx of people, there's always going to be development concerns. And I want to just kind of take a few minutes to address those as best as I can. So there's really four concerns that I, I think, uh, the primary focus that come up. And one of them is affordability. Uh, if you go on Realtor right now, the, the average medium sales price is 425,000, uh, in Waxahaw. And that's simply not attainable or affordable for many people, including those who work downtown, are first responders and teachers. It's becoming hard and becoming, uh, challenging to afford living here. I'm always browsing What's Up Waxahaw on Facebook. And you see quite a bit of folks are always asking for, hey, I, I've got a mother-in-law or my son or my daughter, a family member, and I need to find something they can afford. And it's just, it's becoming really hard. So I think that is a, a very positive part of our development is that our, as we come to the market, will simply be a, a much more affordable project with the density brings additional affordability to, to new residents. The other big issue, of course, is congestion, which I'll talk about in just a minute. And then if you're in adjoining, if you're a property owner who lives right next to the site, how is this, how's this development going to impact you? And I think finally, what's, what's this project, what's the quality of a project going to look like? Madison, if you could move to the next slide, please. So regarding congestion, there's a, the primary intersection, which is, uh, which, you know, at Providence Road and, and 75, obviously anytime you drive down to Waxahaw during rush hour or Friday night or Saturday night, it can, it can back up quite a bit. I want to point out that the main entrance to our site will be off of Blythe Mill Road, which is kind of to the top of the screen, which is, um, it's a, quite a distance between that and again, the main intersection, which, which backs up. In addition to Blythe Mill, there's four other entry points on Price Street, Howie Mine, and of course, Main Street, where you can cross over between, uh, North Providence, as well as, um, uh, to get to Providence, pardon me. In addition to that, our site plan, we're, we're connecting Washington Street, which is on the right side of that screen. And there's also future connections that are planned, um, you know, from Waxahaw that will add additional connectivity points to our neighborhood. So anytime you can add additional connectivity and entry points, it helps with the congestion. Uh, certainly if you're, uh, if you live in that neighborhood, having multiple exits, again, it just helps with the overall congestion, um, along both the neighborhood as well as, uh, in Waxahaw. Go to the, uh, the next slide, uh, next slide, please, Madison. I'm kind of going back to this original slide to really talk about how will this impact, uh, what I think are most important is the residents who live around and near, near this site. One of the, one of, what we're currently doing to address that, uh, is we've been working with, with staff and with planning. And we're adding additional, uh, buffer lengths or buffer widths between our project and the neighboring, uh, and the neighboring properties, which are above and beyond what are requirement of the current, uh, UN zoning. Certainly the entrance, which is off to North Providence. We're installing screening and enhanced landscaping to better protect the neighbors as we, again, as you enter that project. So we're really, I believe, going above and beyond, um, to just make this a win-win so that, you know, we can attract, you know, more homeowners that can enjoy Waxahaw. If the folks live here, they'll be walking primarily to get to any of the shops of, of downtown Waxahaw. So I don't believe we'll add any congestion for the, the Friday night trips to the Creamery, you know, or any of the restaurants that are there. And then lastly, I just want to touch upon, if, if the next slide, please, is, you know, what's the quality of this project? What will it look like? what's the quality of this project? What would it look like? And we're in the very beginning process, you know, of this development, obviously. But Broad Street Homes, they are a local builder, and they're currently have a project called Grove Manor, which is right off of Waxaw Marvin. And I really encourage everybody to drive by that site to see kind of the quality of that product. The project has been a great success. The new homeowners love the open floor plans and, again, love the quality of the project. I think that's really the best way to kind of understand or get to know the builder who's going to be here. Again, this is a local builder. You know, we're not a development company which lives out of state or lives outside of Waxaw, so it's very important that we do our best to, you know, really work with everybody to bring a great project to Waxaw. And in addition, you know, as we develop the, I guess, the renderings and the exterior elevations, this project's called Old Town, and we want to capture as much as possible the architectural elements that you see in downtown Waxaw and kind of have it as an extension of Waxaw as well. So with that, I'm open to any questions. Again, Mason here is here with me as well, who's the engineer, and we do my best to answer any questions you may have. So thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I hate to jump in here, but I've got to be your lawyer. That's what I'm hired to be. When you have straight zoning, the case law is quite clear. The board cannot consider a particular use if it's going to be straight zoning. The only thing they can consider are all the permitted uses in that zone. They cannot consider what an applicant proposes to do, because there's nothing to bind that applicant to do anything. They can only consider what all the permitted uses are in that straight zoning. And the case law is quite clear that it'd be inappropriate to consider what somebody says they might do. I need to let the commissioners know that before they start their questioning. Thank you.
That's correct. Thank you, Charlie, for that. Again, commissioners, this is a request to rezone. This is not a flat map or anything like that.
It's not a conditional use permit request. The applicant could have asked for a conditional permit, and he could go into the detail of his plans, but in this case, the only thing the commissioners can decide on are all the permitted uses under that zoning district.
That's correct. I see town manager Wells.
Yes, and I just want to further, thank you, Mayor, expound on that point. It is a general rezoning. One thing that the board also needs to know is that this will not be the last time that this comes before this body. If, as Charlie said, you know, if this particular developer moves forward, they will be opening up additional public right-of-way, which would put it through the major subdivision process, which goes back through the planning board review, and then ultimately, the Board of Commissioners as well. So if this developer has all of these properties assembled, and of course, they want to rezone these other two parcels to complete their assembly, if they move forward in that fashion, they would come back before this board for a major subdivision plat approval.
My purpose for jumping in now is that the commissioners should not be asking them any question on how they propose to use it.
Jeff, can you, for the citizens, explain what different uses can be in a UN zoning?
Yes, I'll be happy to let Madison do that. He actually has that on a previous slide.
Yeah, so the primary uses for urban neighborhood are of a housing type. So you'll be able to have a single-family house, a town home, a duplex, and then you have some minor other uses, such as a bed and breakfast inn. You have outdoor theater by chance, a church, a daycare center, up to eight children or people, or up to 12 children or people, a vocational school, a artist's studio, a community garden, a farmer's market, and then some form of accessory buildings.
Okay, I've got two questions out there. Jeff, if you're not looking, I'll kind of step in. Mayor Ford, Tim, I see your hand out there.
So with the UN rezoning requests that is here now, any of the uses that you stated would be permissible in that area? So it doesn't have to be stated by, well, we can't ask what they stated, but any of these uses can be permissible in that area?
That is correct.
And just to add to that a little bit, as I understand it in this applicant's request, this is obviously adding to an existing zone that's already there? And so we're just looking at a portion of the property to be, a portion of the project to be rezoned, to conform with the existing zoning around it?
Yeah, so it will be matching the, some of the parcels around it, but then also matching half of what the property is already zoned.
Okay, and also, just one question for me, and I see the other hands going up, so I won't forget you, but on the streets now, if I remember, you're saying those streets in there are already platted streets. They've just never been developed by the town. And so what I'm hearing you say is that those streets then will be part of the future use improvement on there. So we will extend, I don't see a name on that street that goes north and south, and then there's one east and west, and is that from, is that Price or Nibbitt?
It is. It is a part of Price Street Extension, yeah.
Could you point both of those out for us?
Yeah. So Price Street Extension runs all the way to here. So this portion right here does not exist. And then also, this little sliver of street right here also does not exist.
But the town is the one who essentially owns those sections of property?
Well, it's the public that owns it. The town hasn't accepted it.
Right.
But whoever owns the property cannot use it for any purpose other than keeping it as an open space. Now, they could petition the town to have that street closed, and then the title would go to the adjoining property owners. But until the town actually closes and abandons that right-of-way, it's not buildable.
That's correct. So thanks for that, Charlie, that clarification. Just want to make sure that people understand the access points that would be considered in the future, although we are not necessarily talking about that. We're just, again, talking about the general rezoning. So we're looking at properties in that area that are already zoned UN, and we're conforming with the adjacent uses around it. So it's almost a formality, is what we're saying? Madison?
Yes, yeah, that is correct.
Okay, very good. Okay, I saw a couple more hands go up. I'm going to go back up to Commissioner West, like I think I saw your hand go up a minute ago.
Well, mine, I need further clarification on these access points. So you're saying that this paper street right with, as you were just discussing, they cannot use that as an access point unless the town takes it over? Is that what, and makes it a road? Or you're saying this cannot be a road at all because it's public?
It's dedicated to the public, but the public, i.e. the town of Waxaw, has not accepted it yet. And so it sits in limbo until the town actually does something, either to accept it and build it, or alternatively, to abandon it through a closing proceedings, which they can do, and then the title of that property would go to the adjoining property owners.
Okay, so this, all right.
It just sits in limbo right now.
But it could be, let's say, so somebody wanted to develop that property, that they could access it through that way if they go through this process. So is that?
They would have no right to be able to use it until it became a public right-of-way.
Right.
It's not, it would not be their property to use.
Okay, so the property that is on North Providence Street, that's the little section, the longer section on North Providence there, is there, if that's zoned UN, and that's used as, say, an entrance point to get to these properties, is there restrictions on how that's used, as far as, does it just have to be a drive? Are there, can there be parking spaces along the side of it? It's, how can that be used?
There are no restrictions on it until you actually accept it and determine how you want to use it, meaning you being the town of Waxaw.
That would be part of a site plan review, Tracy. So if the developer had a development plan that they wanted to propose, and they wanted to put an entrance there, they would show that on, well, for instance, a major subdivision plat. It would be dedicated as public right-of-way to the town, and it would have to be developed at one of our typical street cross-sections with curb and gutter. We have street cross-sections that have parallel parking on one side. We have street cross-sections that also have parallel parking on both sides, or just the road, curb and gutter. So we have a lot of different choices there for a developer to pick. And so further, you know, if they wanted to open up the street there into that paper street, first, the town would have to relinquish that, but they could also open it back up through developing it, and then allowing the town to dedicate it as public right-of-way and accept it into our road maintenance system.
That's correct.
That's all I have right now.
Very good. I think I saw Mayor Ford, Tim McMillan's hand up.
My question was similar to Commissioner West's regarding that property on North Providence and that section of land where there's an opening that then leads, this is not the picture that I'm looking for. The other picture from Broad Street Homes, I think, shows a clearer view of it that they put up there.
It's sort of like the aerial view of the...
Go back.
This one?
Yes. Okay, so if you go on North Providence Street, okay, and there's a section that leads right into this yellow-green section, which is proposed for UN, where the arrow is right at the top. So that is the town's property right there, which the town would have to either dedicate or, is that considered the UN already section of property? I'm just trying to be clear, right?
Yeah, this portion up here is all considered the UN portion.
Okay, that's all considered the UN portion?
Yes.
All right.
All is up.
There are homes on both sides of that little section of land. So if the developer then wanted to use that, as Commissioner West was saying, for parking or access point to the back section, that is also, that's being requested for UN, they could do that with parking or diaphragm parking or one-sided street parking, as town manager Wells has stated?
Yeah, yeah, they could. So with kind of a site plan review and procedure, as long as what that street is used for, as long as this, you know, in this situation, if it's the right amount of width, it meets our standards, it has like curb and gutter sidewalk, it would be dedicated to the town as a public street, and they could do parking if it meets our engineering design standards.
Okay, now, we as the town, would we have the right to indicate how that could or could not be used, or what it can or cannot look like in discussions with its development? Is that what you're stating?
We could, and so there are different design standards and street sections for different types of use. So like, there's a different street section for like an industrial center versus commercial thoroughfare versus residential collector street. So there's all these things that we'd look at, and something that we could use to create parking, once it's submitted as a site plan review.
Okay, if that was going to be the designated use, then that's what we would look at? Or is that the designated use? Or we don't know?
We don't know.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's just about the zoning itself. So it going from R3 to UN is what's being proposed.
So what would happen, Brenda, if it is rezoned? And whatever was proposed to us would go through what is called a construction document review, where we would require the fully engineered plans for whatever they propose within that area? And that plan that is received then gets distributed out to our technical review committee, which is an extensive body made up of a number of organizations that review these plans based on their discipline, a number of town staff on the planning and zoning side, on the engineering side, on sedimentation and erosion control, the county with environmental health, with the water and sewer, the NC DOT, if there is any DOT streets involved here, which I don't think they would be, so they would probably have no comment, among others. So we go through a review cycle. Typically, we ask for comments to be received by these organizations within three weeks of that review cycle, and then we compile those review comments and send them back to the developer, who then has to answer those. And, you know, we keep going through this process until they meet all of the town requirements. Most developments can, we typically go through two to three review cycles. Rarely is it less than two, if ever. Sometimes it's a lot more. That's rare, too. But I think right now, the record is we had about, we were on one that's over 10 reviews. So it really just depends on what the development proposal is and how responsive the developers are to our requirements. And if there is a required public right-of-way, you know, if they're looking to do anything that would require really any number of additional single-family detached or single-family attached, it's going to require additional public right-of-way dedication, which is going to require a major subdivision plat, which also is part of that review. That is another mechanism that would go before the Board of Commissioners if it got to that point.
Okay, just two quick things. So with this section right here that I'm looking at, and you said that there's consideration in the top, would that also include the homeowners on either side of that section of property that are contacted regarding what's going to happen with that property? And does that little section of land, would it have to be an access point or a driveway? Or could homes also be placed there?
It depends on what the plan is, as to how we would look at the access points. And as far as public noticing requirements for subdivision requests, there is not any public noticing requirements like there are for rezoning requests.
Okay, thank you.
And let me reiterate, I'm sorry to interrupt, but your inquiry tonight is strictly the zoning petition. You cannot consider future developments or how it might be developed. Your only inquiry is, you look at all the permitted uses, and are those permitted uses or any and all of them appropriate for this petition?
So with those permitted uses, though, questions can be asked or addressed regarding the possibility of how those uses would fit into?
No, not on straight zoning.
Not on straight zone?
Not on straight zoning. They can be utilized in any way, shape, or form.
Any other questions?
April, I saw you have a question.
Madison, if you could just, for a clarification sake, you said a few minutes ago that the zoning was similar to what is surrounding the parcel in question.
Yes.
Did you go ahead and just clarify, make sure everybody on the map?
Yeah.
The zone, the zone is going to be, or a question is the term there, urban neighborhood. I think when people read urban, they immediately think, you know, 10-story high-rises. I think when people read urban, they immediately think, uh, you know, 10-story high-rises. So I'm glad you mentioned what falls under urban neighborhood. But if you could just go back and kind of maybe clarify, uh, urban neighborhood, the surrounding pieces of property, how many of those would fit into urban neighborhood?
Yeah, so, um, if you can see on this map excluding the parcels here in question, everything along North Providence Street and Millard Drive are what we can, is what's on UN urban neighborhood. And it's more of a, um, kind of the urban feel where you have your single-family homes. You have your, uh, they're a little bit closer knit. It's, uh, more walkable, pedestrian-friendly sidewalks. Um, so it's not really this, um, 10-story high-rise where you think of like, um, maybe like the city of Charlotte with, with urban. This is more of a, um, a higher density feel versus our, our standard residential subdivisions outside of the downtown code. So this is more of a walkable, closer knit, um, homes and areas where, um, it promotes more uh, like street trees and, and larger sidewalks and usually close to, to downtown and kind of how this is.
So Madison, would it be fair to say that the surrounding neighborhood is basically already urban neighborhood for the sake of that term as it's used?
Well, it's, it's used in the, in the sense of the zoning district. Um, and so some of these homes are, are larger lots where it's, um, you know, maybe half an acre with one single-family home. But the, the district itself is just the name given for, for urban neighborhood, which is the predominantly medium-density residential area.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I see Commissioner Simpson raising her hand.
Thank you, Mayor. This might be a question for Char- Charlie. Just to clarifying, to be clear, we cannot consider any future use of what the applicant or developer will do with this project or this property. We just need to identify, does it fit within the uses under the, um, UN designation? Is that correct?
That's exactly right.
Okay, so we can't consider any speculative of what they may or may not do, but we just need to determine, does this meet the requirements of this use?
That is exactly right.
Okay. I think I have my, um, answer.
Very good. Any other questions? Madison, you still have the floor along with the town manager? Oh, we got two more questions. Here we go again. I'm gonna, since Anne was on there already, I'll let you continue Anne, if you could do that.
Okay, so this might be for Jeff or Madison. So, once we determine if this meets the criteria or doesn't meet the criteria of this particular use, and then the applicant down the road wants to put in, um, let's say, single-family homes or town homes or something to that effect, then that would go through our own, um, process to, for that approval process and would come back before the board before that would be approved?
Yes.
So it would go through the town's approval process. So you would work with the applicant and the developer to make sure it has a certain look, feel and everything. And then that would be represented to us at a later date to approve, correct?
Exactly, yep.
Okay, we have flying hands all over the place. I'm gonna jump up to Commissioner Westlick. You had your hand up earlier again.
Yes, um, Madison, if you could go back to the slide before where you showed the, the yellow zoning, where the, the zoning request is actually for, um, it showed the two colors of the, I think it was the slide before. Um, the one that you had with Commissioner McMillan.
Oh, yeah.
I think it's the Broad Street slide.
Yep.
Okay.
Let me.
Yeah, yeah, that one.
This one.
Um, right, okay. So if we're really just looking at the yellow, because that's really what we're talking about here, this yellow part. So let's say, so you've got two separate projects going on, on these two separate plats. Um, does that yellow section have, are those two access points that you see? I see the one is on that paper street, but the one that's on the, you know, on the bottom there, is that a current road or what is that there?
Yeah, so this is Washington Street, so it is existing road. So if you can see my arrow, um, the road goes to about where this green arrow ends.
Okay.
So it's an existing 26-foot, uh, public street.
Okay. All right, that's all I have.
Very good. I saw Mayor Protem's hand going back up.
Just a follow-up from what Commissioner Simpson asked. Um, uh, the uses that we are only to address regarding, um, this rezoning issue. So if the applicant, you know, as she asked, was to put single-family homes or town homes or duplexes, how it would come back through the process? So under the uses of permissible uses, if the applicant decided that they wanted to put a movie theater there, if that's a permissible use, then they would be able to present plans to put that movie theater there as well. Am I correct?
As far as an outdoor theater, um, yes. Now, I think there were, um, there were supplemental regs with that.
Um, but I'm just stating as a permissible use.
Yes.
And that's one, something that Commissioner Simpson asked, as a permissible, permissible use. If we are just looking at it as a zoning request and what is permitted as a use and not what the future uses may be, that could also be a permissible use.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
But is that, when you said, you think there's a supplemental reg with it, does that mean that if a developer wanted to put an outdoor theater there, it would still have to be approved by the board, correct?
No, they, once, once they, so with the, the use allowed by right as an outdoor theater, they would have to meet the supplemental regulation, um, required with the outdoor theater before, um, approval. So, um, without looking through the ordinance to see what it is, it could be something with, you know, decimal levels at property line or, or something of that where they would have to meet. So the use itself would still be by right, but they would have to, to follow these regulations.
So how it works Tracy is, is that if you have a permitted use by right, whatever uses are permitted use by right in UN, they would be able to move forward with administrative review of whatever that use is. Uh, now, on the flip side of that, if you have single-family homes that would be proposed here, whether they're detached or whether they're attached, unless they're only putting one or two homes in different spots there, they're going to have to do a subdivision plat, a major subdivision plat, to dedicate additional public right-of-way, which is what the process is. And that would be a process that would go back through the board. Now theoretically, if somebody wanted to do an outdoor theater there, uh, they would not have to do that. You know, they would just have to go through the administrative site plan review and then, uh, meet the town requirements, all of the town requirements along with whatever supplemental regulations that they have.
I see, um, Charlie, did you have a comment?
Just one comment on the subdivision approval when it comes back. The only discretion that the board has is, does this plan conform to the regulations in the subdivision ordinance or not? You don't have approval of it or not approval, just on the merits. You only have the, the, uh, to look at the administrative part of it, does it comply with the subdivision regulations or not? But you don't get to say whether that use is okay or not.
That'd be correct. And, and just, uh, another point of clarification, uh, for some understanding. The existing, what we see in the blue there, that exists already. That was passed some years back, uh, by prior boards and, and committees. So if we were being a little bit, uh, having a little bit fun with this, I mean, those uses can already be applied to that western section of the property.
That's correct.
You might be correct, uh, Town Manager, right? And Planning Director.
Correct.
What's the, what's the yellow designation?
So that is the, the R3, the single-family residential.
Okay, all right. Uh, any other questions? Moving on, any more hands coming up? Nothing coming forward? All right, well, I think, uh, that right now, uh, there would be no further questions or comments on it. I think we're at the point where we can, uh, have a motion to close this public hearing. And so I'm looking for a motion to do so please.
So moved.
Very good. Uh, any discussion on that? Seeing there is no, no hands raised for that discussion, a roll call vote please to, uh, to close this, uh, public hearing. Um, we'll do it by roll call again. Mayor Protem McMillan.
Aye.
Commissioner Simpson.
Aye.
Commissioner Morey.
Aye.
Commissioner Wesley.
Aye.
All right, very good. We're closed out of that. Thank you very much. That was a good discussion all the way around. So thank you, uh, Jeff and Madison for helping try to clarify those a little bit. That's great. So we're gonna move down to item number three on the public hearings, which is Waxaw Ventures LLC conditional district rezoning for petition CD 009145-2019. And so with this, I'd like to, uh, entertain a motion to open this public hearing.
So moved.
Very good. Thank you very much. Any discussion on this? Roll call vote to open this public hearing. Mayor Protem McMillan, please.
Aye.
Commissioner Wesley.
Aye.
Commissioner Simpson.
Aye.
Commissioner Morey.
Aye.
Very good. Thank you, everybody. And so we are open on this public hearing. I'm gonna turn it back over to the Town Manager and, and the Town Clerk. Town Manager, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor, and I will turn this back over to the Town Clerk, uh, for discussion of public comment.
Thank you, Manager Wells. Public comments for the public hearing, um, petition CD 009145-2019 have been received. The public comment portion of this hearing will remain open for 24 hours after the hearing has closed. Any additional comments received will be forwarded to the Board of Commissioners and will continue to be incorporated into the public record. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Melody. So this is your third public hearing tonight. This is a petition and a request from Waxaw Ventures LLC for a conditional district rezoning map amendment from R2, Single Family Residential and Conditional Use R2, Single Family Residential to CDR4PRD, which stands for Conditional District, Single Family Residential, Planned Residential Development. And this project area is approximately 212 acres. It's located off of Rehoboth Road and Waxaw Crossing Drive. It entails four different tax parcels and the proposed use is a single-family detached residential development containing 488 lots. And so how this request differs from the previous request is this is a conditional district zoning request. And so this particular one, the use has already been gone, gone through a process. It's been vetted. This application was actually received over a year ago. It was received in July of 2019. It has been through four different plan reviews, which the accepted plan was in your plan packet. The, the review that, the semi-engineered drawings for this particular, uh, development. The fourth review cycle was completed back in the winter of, uh, 2020. And so here we are today, moving through the, uh, the process. And as I mentioned before, with, with every site planned review, that gets, uh, distributed out to our technical review committee, who then provides comments, uh, based on their discipline on the plan. And as I said, this particular review went through four review cycles before we were comfortable that it met the town requirements to move forward with this process. So first, a little history on this particular, uh, development. The original approval was back in 2006. It entailed 47 lots that were platted along Waxaw Crossing Drive, and that was for phases one and two. Each lot had septic tanks. There was no sewer available at that time and, and continues to be up to this moment. So far, only about a third of the 47 lots have been developed. There was a phase three that was approved back in 2008 for 21 additional lots, but that phase was never developed. The original vision for this project to this point has never been fulfilled. So some of the specific land use and site details, as I mentioned before, the total site is approximately 212 acres. There will be five total phases proposed with the development. And I have a map, uh, later on in the presentation that will, uh, go over, uh, those different phases. 488 lots. The density is proposed at 2.29 units per acre. So just to give you a, a thought process of, of another development that is, is similar, uh, as far as the density, but not the overall size, but, but Lawson is almost the exact same density as 2.29 units per acre. The typical lots are 52 and 60 feet wide with a minimum lot, and that is minimum of 6,000 square feet. Uh, most would be larger than that, but that is the minimum requirement there. There is a 30-foot perimeter buffer around the entire development that would be proposed to be deeded to a homeowners association as well as all of the common open space. Sewer will now be available just north of the property. And that is of course why this development is being proposed in the way that it is. And, uh, our town engineer, uh, Matt Hubert, will, uh, be on this, uh, a little bit later on to go over some specifics about the sewer, the big picture of that, as well as the traffic, uh, impact analysis and some of those requirements. Our streets will meet all the town standards that are proposed within the development. Uh, sidewalks on both sides of the street, street trees, curb and gutter, all the normal things that we look for, uh, in approval of a project of that such. They have those in their typical cross-sections. Uh, we have, for a little over a year now, we have a street connectivity ordinance. And this actually, uh, has fit this particular project very well. We're very happy with how that's been applied with this. And we'll show that off here, uh, shortly, at a future slide in this presentation. So this is the overall project area, if you look at it from an aerial view. So hopefully you can see my cursor here. Waxaw Crossing Drive is the north and south road that enters into the project area. This is the existing area of the preserve. The 47 lots that have been platted to this point with about a third of them that have a house on them. It dead ends up here on the, um, on the north end of that property, uh, into the subject property. Sims Road to the south runs east and west. That's what the existing Waxaw Crossing Drive enters into. It has frontage along Rehoboth Road, which is the north and south minor thoroughfare. It has two points of frontage there and, and that's where two of their proposed entrances would be. Those would be the two other main entrances to this proposed development along with the existing entrance there at Sims Road. So this is how our current zoning map looks. If you look at, at the map, the area in green is the existing R2. I mentioned that phase three, which is the conditional use R2, that's over here on the western part of the property with the dots. So there is, uh, pretty much all of our single-family residential districts are represented nearby. You have R1 and R2 to the east and northeast. You also have R3 as well as R4 directly to the north. You even have RM1 up here to the north. That's Ashton Manor, Hillcrest and Magnolia Ridge are two of the, um, the R4 subdivisions. This, uh, blue cylinder with the S on it represents where the pump station will be located. The, uh, the developer owns this parcel of land just to the north of there. And, uh, they have worked with the county to provide them a area of that property so the county can construct a, um, a sewer pump station at that location. So if the property were to be rezoned. So if the property were to be rezoned, this is how the map would change. The yellow would be R4. The wavy lines represent conditional district zoning, and the crosshatch represents planned residential development. So, and here's a very good visual here of the overall master plan. This right here is the northern entrance at Rehoboth Road. This entrance would connect into the existing dead end there at Waxaw Crossing Drive would continue and provide through to Sims Road. Here's the other proposed entrance in the western part of the property that would be a several hundred feet south of Richardson King Road. And as you can see, the other tie-in points, which I'll talk about in just a minute with additional street connectivity. The yellow lots represent the 52-foot lots. The beige represents the 60-foot lots. And they have proposed a few estate lots over on the very western edge of the proposed development. And those are shown right here on the western side. There's six of those lots that are proposed. So as part of the planned residential development in our new land development code, this will be called cluster subdivisions, but this depicts how this particular development tool is utilized quite well in allowing for a good bit of the open space in the areas around the floodplain, as well as other open space areas to be preserved as opposed to conventional type subdivision where a developer could just create lots and divide up all this area within private ownership. The planned residential development, while it does allow for smaller lots, it does allow for some of the green space and some of the most critical environmental resource areas to be protected by common ownership type HOAs, or even in some cases, the town, the town has taken over some in some specific cases as well. This is a tool that we feel like is better used to preserve some of these environmentally sensitive areas as opposed to them being within the individual, individual lots. And here are all the proposed connection points. Now, this was one of the critical parts of our site plan review and part of the four plan reviews. This, this had a couple of different versions throughout the process of the review. And of course, this is the final version here. It includes 11 different points of connection. The three main points are the main entrances here on the north. Of course, that one again would be Waxaw Crossing Drive and would go through and connect through to Sims Road. The western entrance here, which would be part of their fifth phase, which would be done of course, several years down the road. They would connect into these existing dead end streets. If you drive up Waxaw Crossing Drive, there are one, two, three, four different dead end streets. Each of these streets would be connected in and further continue throughout the development. There is another street that would be created, two streets off of Waxaw Crossing Drive. And if you head over here to the east, we have one, two, three, four additional stubouts. If any development happens in those tracts of land, then they would have the ability to hook in to our existing system and continue to disperse that traffic throughout any proposed development as opposed to filtering them all to want the same points of access there. If these properties are never developed, then they just sit there as they are. No harm, no foul. If the property is developed, then there's a way for that traffic to be dispersed readily throughout the entire development area of whatever that may be. So here is the project phasing. Phase one would be the northern part of the property, and that represents about 122 of the lots that are proposed. Phase two would be on the eastern side of the property. And phases three, four, and five would be in the southern and western portion of the, of the proposed development. And again, this is Rehoboth Drive on the western side of the development that runs north-south of the proposed development. So here are some examples of what the houses would look like within the, within the development. And this project is, their partner, the developers partnered with Lennar. So they would be providing, they're the, a national builder that would be providing the houses within this development. Here are several examples of different types of housing that they would look to put on the property, what the different type of housing that, they're called Elderly Franklin, different floor plans, Hancock. The right-hand side here is a letter that we received as part of this initial application, well, before it was provided to the planning board. And this was from the HOA president who, at the time, expressed and on behalf of the HOA support of this development. That was dated June 17th, 2020. As far as future land use, through our future land use plan, this is in the controlled growth sector. Single family detached dwellings are their predominant dwelling type. The permitted density is up to one dwelling unit per 2.3 acres. And the part in bold is the key phrase of this is if and when more intense growth sectors are developed, and if and when urban services are extended to the site in a manner similar to those described in the G3 intended growth sectors to include greater roadway network density and incorporation within utility service areas, permitted densities associated with the G3 residential designation may be achieved. So the sewer pump station that will be constructed directly north of the project, regardless of this property is approved or not, and the greater area as well as the street connection to Rehoboth Road, staff feels satisfies the requirement for greater roadway density and incorporation of utilities into the service area for a G3 intended growth sector designation. And we'll go into the specifics of that as we move forward and what our proposed conditions are based on these factors. But before we get there, I also want to give you as the board who are, I'm sure familiar with this already, but also anybody from the public that is watching a sneak peek into our new land development code and our new updated future land use and zoning map that we are proposing, all of which is available online now for your viewing right there, accessed from the homepage. This particular piece of property, if this new zoning is approved right now, and it still has a long ways to go, but the, the initial proposal is medium density residential, which would allow for a density of up to three to five units per acre. The proposed initial zoning of that would be R3, which would mean three units per acre, or it could qualify up to three and a half units per acre if it were a cluster development. So as I mentioned before, this is still a process that we hope to get to the finish line of sometime in the winter of 2021. We are working with the planning board now. We'll actually be working on some specific comments they had at their next meeting coming up next week. And then we'll be ramping up discussions with the Board of Commissioners on all things involved with this proposed code as well as our updated zoning maps and future land use plan through the fall of this coming, this coming year. But we proposed this amount of density here specifically because the sewer pump station that the county will be building there just north of the property that obviously would give this property the ability to develop at that level, but also the basin up to the north. It opens up the areas to the north of town that right now have capacity, sewer capacity issues. And this is where I will segue into Matt Hubert, our town engineer, that can talk more specifics about the sewer, the sewer pump station as well as traffic, and I can, he can just tell me when to progress the slide whenever he is ready. So, Matt, are you there?
Absolutely. Thank you, Jeff Gayton. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. It's my pleasure to tell you what to do here in the next couple of slides. I think you did a good job setting up the, the sewer background if.
Matt, you're cutting out. Matt, can you hear us? Bear with us, got a little technical difficulties there.
Okay. I've changed some settings to you. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
We can't hear you?
Yes. All right. Sorry about that. But yeah, to, to, to reiterate, the, the county's known for some time that downtown is, is, is going to be due to suffer some capacity issues. Any future growth would be on a case-by-case basis. And so the provision of this property, which has already occurred and, and moving forward with the pump station is, is in line with the county's plan. They did a detailed study of Waxaw in, in 2018 that showed a number of, of alternatives to how they could address that. They range from $5 million to $15 million in cost, and they all involve the pump station of one sort of or another. So this really helps move the town and the county forward with, with the kind of conditions that that they could really only contemplate. They didn't have the funding at the time. And so, again, that's already, it's already moving. I think I will add that this, the capacity of this station is not just designed for the preserve itself. It's designed above capacity to provide what, what the town believes it's going to need going into the future. And that's, that's certainly helpful in this case for us and the county. And again, there, there are no strings attached here. This is moving forward. I think what is, what is worthy of note is that, you know, if this subdivision were to be approved, the tap fees from this will go a long way toward providing the county additional funds to, to move these kinds of projects forward on a timeline that, that everybody would like to see. Jeff, if you would have advanced the slide. Again, he did a good job of showing the access points. And I won't reiterate those details. I think they were well explained. Again, all the requirements of our street cross-sections will be met and are proposed to be met with both a 50 and 60-foot right-of-way cross-sections per our manual. This project does have access directly to DOT roads, so there, all their access requirements must be met. That includes site distance. It includes turning lanes if required. And, and so that, that detail won't come about until the, the next phase construction document submittals, which will show the survey required to, to ensure that they meet all the, all the safety guidelines for, for new roadways accessing DMT. So one thing of note is that the, the proposed secondary access, the south access on, on Rehoboth is only about 400 feet from the Richardson King intersection. That's a, not necessarily what DOT would like to see. And so once we get the vertical cross-section information, we'll be in a position to know, will that connection be approved as is, or will it be denied by DOT? If, if that's the case, we'll, we'll have to look internally for more connectivity to try and make it easier for residents inside to, to access the, the town streets, the state streets. Next slide, please. So again, this, the, the size of this does warrant that it meets both town and NC DOT TIA analysis. And so this has already been done and complete, and the, the improvements on the left hand of the, of the slide show in red what, what locations and what the actual mitigations that are required of the developer to provide in order to address the, the new traffic that they'd be putting on the, on their own site and the off-site intersections. And so NC 75 and Old Providence Road, they are required to put in a traffic signal and make improvements to the eastbound right turn lane. That's remove the old one and add one that's closer into the signal. The second mitigation is at NC 75 and 16. That's right downtown. They would be required to put an eastbound left turn lane along 75 with 300 feet of storage so that those turning movements can be out of the way of the through movements of 75 and queue up until they have a green arrow to, to make their maneuver. The third mitigation is at NC 75 and Rehoboth Road where they would be required to install a traffic signal. Fourth one is at Sims Road and Waxaw Crossing Drive. Basically, they would have to put in a, a turn lane with storage to allow access into the site to get the deceleration out of the way. Similar at number five is Rehoboth Road and Access One is to create the intersection there and, and put turn lanes in to provide storage that's outside of the, the through traffic. Again, all these locations will have to get reviewed for appropriate site distance, and other changes might be required once that detail comes in. And then finally, Rehoboth Road and Access Two, same conditions, ingress and egress lanes. And, and the review that location and, and sure it meets DOT minimum standards. I believe, if we go to the next slide, I believe that's it on the, on the traffic side.
Thank you, Matt.
Right.
Appreciate that. So staff recommendation and then as well as the planning board recommendation, the single family detached residential is certainly the highest and best use for the subject area. There really is no other use that would fit for that particular piece of property. Additionally, with the availability of sewer, staff believes that there's really no reason to limit the density in this area to approximately one acre lots. Staff recommends approval of the proposed conditional district rezoning from R2 to Conditional Use R2 to the Conditional District R4 PRD or Planned Residential Development with the following conditions. The developer shall follow the conceptual site plan as presented. The developer shall match the submitting housing elevations as part of the conditional district rezoning. Completion of a transportation mitigation agreement after rezoning that will include the installation of a traffic light at Rehoboth Road and NC 75 prior to issuance of the first certificate of occupancy. Payment and lieu for transportation mitigations at Old Providence Road and NC 75 set at $428,000. Payment dispersment in accordance with NC DOT municipal agreement. Now that payment and lieu is due to the fact that the project, that roundabout project of the intersection of NC 75 and Old Providence Road is a funding project, funded project and is moving through the process. And of course, the board may remember some additional funds that were dedicated to that for some cost overruns that were projected for that. This $428,000 would go a very long way towards paying for the town's portion, our 20% portion that we're required to pay as part of that project that right now is scheduled for completion, I believe, in 2025. The other payment and lieu would be for transportation mitigations. The other payment and lieu would be for transportation mitigations at North Broom Street or NC 16 and NC 75, and that would be set at $172,000. As Matt mentioned, that would basically be their share of the cost for the improvements that they would have had to do there otherwise. That is another project that currently is in the planning stages. The payment shall be made prior to the issuance of the first certificate of occupancy is what we would tie that condition to as well. And lastly, traffic calming measures as agreed upon with the town and developer. And this would be agreed upon prior to construction document approval. The planning board unanimously recommended approval of the conditional district rezoning as presented. You requested action, and again, this is on August 25th. As you complete the public hearing process this evening, you would have the ability to make a motion to approve the petition as presented. Since it is a conditional zoning request, you also have the ability to make a motion to approve with any recommended amendments to the application such as changes to the site plan or conditions. So I will back up for a second and mention that the developer has agreed to those proposed conditions as they have been presented. If the board wishes to alter the plan or alter one of the conditions, that would be fine to do as long as the developer agrees with that. So that would be part of that if the board wished to go down that road. And your other option would be a motion to deny the petition as presented. As far as the reasonableness and consistency statement, the statement staff is proposing is the conditional district rezoning request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and future planning goals of the town of Waxall and is reasonable and in the public interest as it will allow for a 488 watt planned residential development in an area that will provide new infrastructure to accommodate the development and improve the surrounding service area with needed infrastructure upgrades. The infrastructure upgrades will allow this area to change from a G2 controlled growth sector to G3 intended growth sector. So just a few other comments to mention in the big picture here about infrastructure, particularly number one with the traffic light at the intersection of Rehoboth and NC 75. That is not a funded project. I mean, that's not even a planned project. Based on that alone, it would be a long time before a traffic light were ever installed there unless the town was able to afford to do that on its own or if a developer would do it. So in this case, with the traffic mitigations there, which include 17 crashes at that intersection over a five year period, certainly called for that as the primary mitigation there, makes sense to require that as a condition. Now, the other, the roundabout project where the traffic impact analysis, the modeling that was run showed that additional traffic would come out too. As I mentioned before, the developer, since that is a funded project, they would make a payment and lieu towards the funding of that project that would cover a significant portion of the town's payment into that project, which is 20%. And then the third would be the payment and lieu for NC 16 and NC 75. That project is still in the planning stages. With that payment and lieu though, for $172,000, it makes it feasible for the town to look at options through our own funding mechanisms to group that money with money through potentially our small transportation plan or power bill funds and maybe be able to advance that project further along in a quicker fashion. So I've said a lot, I know. And I will certainly pause here and let the developer come in. Mr. Marcus Arroyo, he represents Typar Realty. And he is here, I think with his development team to talk about the development as well. So hopefully Marcus is online with us.
Jeff, can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
Jeff, thank you. Let me take a quick minute to thank Mayor Pappas, Mayor Proton McMillan, Commissioner Westlick, Commissioner Simpson, and Commissioner Maury. Town manager Jeff and town engineer Matt. You guys have all been great to work with and extremely, extremely diligent and comprehensive in all of the, over the course of the last couple of years. I do represent the group. The group is called Waxall Ventures. I am president of Typar Commercial Realty. We have a group that does own the land. We bought the property in 2017. We immediately went to work on getting back to the current residents that have been going through major changes from multiple builders and developers and banks over the course of that period of time. We also invested, we could have bought just the 225 acres, but we also invested in 29 lots that are currently there to be neighbors with them and make sure that their current property and evaluation was protected. The reason why we did that was because 76% of the owners in this group Waxall Ventures are Union County residents, not just residents like I am, moving here from 2014 and moved my family into the area, but they were all born and raised here. And so we want to invest in all of Union County. We want to invest in Waxall. And we have targeted Waxall in particular. And so as we continue through our path, we don't consider ourselves developers in this particular play. We consider ourselves facilitators. We want to basically facilitate the help and work with the public to actually hear the voices on what's needed, work with staff and commissioners in this area to try to facilitate the needs that we need. What are those? Infrastructure, schools, traffic issue. We hear that because we live in these streets as well. So the best way to be, it's not just a voice to send notes and go on social media and really basically stir up the pot. It's actually to be a solution. We want it to actually be part of the solution. So we put ourselves in that mix. And so that's what brings us here. This is something that we actually purchased in 17 and it's 2020 on a way that we wanted to do this the right way. We have been through multiple staff. We have been through multiple commissioners on working with this. And sometimes timing is key, is to make sure that we have to do this right. And so we were able to facilitate with the county and work on a pump station and put out there in our team, our facilitation team, we went ahead and brought in a group called Land Design. Land Design has vast, vast knowledge in everything of the Mecklenburg Union County area. And with us tonight, I do want to bring in Dale Stewart as well as Rob Kluck. And we also have here with us Randall Tillman. That is part of all of this entire team to actually be able to answer staff questions as well as commissioners, your questions. We are well aware of the comments that the constituents have put out there. I have personally sat with a good amount of constituents in the area. There's misinformation out there that we are here to actually kind of set the record straight and make sure that the message that we put out there is consistent with what we have been following through our path. Jeff, one thing I do want to kind of clear up real quick is the word on your presentation, which is absolutely comprehensive. But on there, you actually put out the word match. We want to make sure on the elevations, we want to make sure that we don't want to match anything. This wants to be something that is different and consistent with the current situation that our neighbors down there do follow. It's important imperative for us to make sure that we clear that up. So is that okay for me to bring that up now, Jeff?
Yes, that is Marcus. And I do apologize. I did not change that word before this presentation. But yes, I think that consistent with those plans is a very fair word to change that to when we get to that point.
Okay. All right. Thank you. You know, we took in major consideration when it comes to our neighbors and our adjacent property owners as well as, as well as the taste. I am here. This was an extremely comprehensive plan. I'm here to answer all of your questions. If I can't personally answer those, I do have our team here with me. And with that being said, Dale, are you, Dale and Rob, are you currently on? Can we just do kind of a mic check real quick to make sure they're on?
Rob Kluck is here.
Dale Stewart is here.
Great, great. Okay. Dale, would you like to add to my comments at this point?
The only thing I would say, Marcus, thanks to the town, Land Design. I think I can say that we have a great affection for Waxall. We've been not only a part of a number of developments, but we have been able to work with the town on park and rec plan. We worked on the, as the mayor previously presented, we worked with the YMCA on that project. Millbridge is one of the first major projects that we did. And so I just want to say that we share the goals and aspirations and many factors. And what we try to do as we help our clients is to be aware of and represent not just the client's interest, but the town's goals as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. Jeff, I think we are, we're here. We got some other points that I'm sure that we'll probably touch on throughout this. I do want to hit on the amenity building. I do want to hit on the base house price. If the commissioners, I do want to hit on the nature trail and the open space. So we'll touch base on that as the, you know, I don't want to be redundant on this. I know we have several things that we gotta go through and this could be pretty lengthy. So for that, I'll turn it back to you if you're okay with that. Hello?
I can hear you.
We hear you.
Okay. No, Jeff, what I stated there at that point, at this point, we'll turn it back to you. We're here to answer any and all questions.
Okay. Thank you, Marcus. I appreciate that. So just to circle back around with what Marcus said about the conditions. And I did forget to change that word from our previous discussions. Is that, that's the second bullet point there. The developer shall match the submitted housing elevations. And we discussed that that would say the developer, the developer, the submitted housing elevation shall be consistent as part of the conditional district rezoning. The reasoning behind that was, is I think they ran into problems in Mecklenburg County when they submitted these housing elevations. And the word match created a situation where they had to do the exact colors and the scheme exactly as on the, as shown on the slides as part of their approval process. And of course, the intention here is to not require them to match it verbatim 100%, but to provide a guide for the type of housing and the type of elevations that they want to provide. I'm comfortable with that word being changed from match to being consistent. And of course, if that would be the case, then we would, that would be part of the approval for two weeks from today on the 25th, assuming that the developer would be agreeable to that. So with that, we're certainly happy myself and the developer to answer any and all questions that you may have.
Commissioner Simpson? Thanks, Mayor. Jeff or Marcus, who I just have a, first off, I just would like to reassure the public that, or residents and citizens watching tonight, that I did read through all the public comments that have been submitted thus far, that I want to thank them for giving us their feedback for our consideration. Some of the things, as I was going through those comments, I was able to take some notes and come up with some themes that I just really wanted to go over and see if you have, can kind of speak to those. One of the common themes was traffic and the safety along Rehoboth that on these bicycles, it's windy. And the safety aspect, if one of y'all can speak to that.
I certainly can start with that by deferring that to our town engineer, Mr. Matt Hubert. And we also have Brady Finkley with Kenley Horn, who's our consulting traffic engineer as well. And he may be able to chime in on that as well. Matt?
Absolutely. Is everybody hearing me good now? Great. And so, yeah, we, as standard with the TIA, we do an intersection analysis. And so the intersections of the study area were all checked. The crash histories were checked and reviewed to see what additional safety measures might be taken. And so those have already been accounted for. In addition, we went beyond the TIA and did a strip analysis, which is basically getting all the crash reports from the roadways in between the intersections to identify, is there something we maybe weren't paying attention to that don't show up in the intersection data? And so when we did that, we didn't find that there was any kind of pattern, nothing repetitive. They were really one-off crashes that there were either driver error or just miscommunications between movements out of driveways. And so in that regard, we didn't see anything that prompted concern to take additional analysis. But what we did do, because you're correct, there are a lot of curves in that area and a lot of advisory speed limits are 35. And so we did make a request to DOT that they look at possibly reducing the speed limit in consideration of that. If this were to go forward and we add more traffic, we would want approaches into town to slow down before they got to town limits as they are now. And so in that regard, we did look at more data than we typically would specific to these locations and have made some recommendations.
Great. So it sounds like what you said, that we've made some recommendations to NC DOT to lower, to make a permanent speed limit reduction in some of those windy, curvy areas. Is that correct?
Correct. Both the chief of police went out there and we looked at the crash reports that were provided that were over and above the intersection reports and made, and again, being aware of the site, what's going on out there, we felt it reasonable to ask for. And what's DOT is going to do is they'll do an analysis and they'll follow their own requirements and respond back whether it's warranted or whether they don't feel it's warranted.
Matt, do you know out of those, some of that accident or information, how many were bicyclists? Because I did read a lot in the comments that there's a lot of bicyclist activity on that road. Was there any data in there?
The crashes that I saw, I didn't see any. They were either single vehicle or vehicle to vehicle sideswipes. or vehicle to vehicle side swipes. There was one head-on and it was, a car went off the road and hit a tree. And so specifically, I can go back and, and check with, with specific to look for bicycle, but I didn't see anything in, in the numbers that we were given.
So this information, it's, it's no more, or it would be probably the same as any other street road in terms of like accident data, except for maybe the intersection?
Correct.
It's not inherently unsafe per se?
No. Again, it is, it is a rural road, and so it's not well lit at night. The, the speed limits are, are, are really in keeping with the amount of traffic that it sees. And so it's, it's, it's no more or less safe, I would say, than anything else out in the county. But again, understanding what, what the impacts might be here, we would want to take into consideration the changes and have DOT look at that more directly.
Sure. And then I did notice as we're going through this presentation is Rehoboth is going to connect to Sims, is that a possibility that that road would be a cut through? I mean, would you anticipate traffic from people living or trying to get to Sims to cut through the development to maybe avoid the curves? Or, I mean, would it, I mean, I did see something about traffic coming, would we talk for that specific roadway or is that, hasn't even been discussed yet?
No, I think that's, that's certainly needs to be considered. Generally, I don't think you're going to find it favorable to go through the subdivision when the, the traffic and the speeds are more favorable to stay on Rehoboth down to Sims. But because there are a lot of long straight streets in this design and, and the existing Waxaw Crossing Road, I'm going to require that, that some, some pretty significant traffic calming measures be in place as a part of the plan and not something that we have to worry about after the fact. To one, make it safer for the residents in there and to discourage cut through traffic.
Well, that's good. Something else that I saw about, and whoever wants to take this is sort of, I know people were, were concerned about the impact that this would have on the schools. And I do know that that's not really something that we as a town necessarily, we don't fund it or have too much control over that. I know it's driven by the Union County, but have we engaged or worked through the schools or put it in a plan of, you know, as we bring these houses online, like have we worked with in terms of the schools and the school board?
Yes, and this plan was submitted as part of the technical review. Each of its different review phases, they get, every time that we do this, we submit plans to the Union County School System. The plan is reviewed by their, one of their facility managers, and they provide us comment back. And what they did this time is, is as they usually do, is they give us their projected rated capacities based on the existing school year, which at the time, this was reviewed in that fashion, was the 2019 and 2020 school year. The, the key statement from them was that there is not expected to be an immediate impact on school enrollments. There's significant residential development in the works for this area. There's the Main Street Town Home Community that was mentioned, that's 117 unit age targeted community, so that will not have a impact on the schools. Our more apartments, 245 units, that certainly has the, the potential to have some impact, but most likely minimal for who typically would purchase those apartments. Grove Manor is age, age targeted community, that's 108 units, so that would not have any direct effect. Millbridge, Millbridge is actually large enough that it covers two separate school zones. And so the area that is within the Parkwood and the Waxaw Elementary School areas covers 292 additional lots. That one certainly would have an impact on the school capacity as well as Belshire, which is the 105 units. So really, it's, at this point would be the southern portion of Millbridge and Belshire as well as this development that would contribute to the school population over a, a time period that this, this development is phased out. Based on their analysis, that Waxaw Elementary School has a projected capacity right now of 84%. Parkwood is 79%. Parkwood Middle School and then Parkwood High School is 83%. So currently, they do fit within the capacity projections for, for this area. Now, I know it's very different on the northern side of town with Cuthbertson and Kensington and those areas, but there is capacity on the southern side of town.
So it sounds like the, the Union County School System or Board basically said that this would not have a great impact on their capacity. I mean, it would, would impact their capacity, but they still have capacity, so is that right?
Well, that, that's correct. I mean, they never say that it doesn't have an impact, but it contributes to its, to the impact there and, and of course adds to the, to the capacity that it has. And of course, you know, this is the type of data that they use in making their determinations of if or when they need to expand an existing school or whether they need to start planning for the location of another school.
And so along that same line, I know you talked about how it would be phased, what would be the timeline? Because I know we have like different phases here. So is there a certain like timeline of how many houses would come on and in what time, kind of timeframe?
Yes, there is, and I might actually let Marcus answer that question.
Jeff, thank you. Commissioner Simpson, that's actually a great question, and I'd like to take a little bit of time to elaborate a little bit deeper into that. I'd like to bring Dale Stewart into this conversation. Dale, if, if, if you wouldn't mind going into a, a pretty deep conversation as far as how we face timeline, how this whole thing, and just kind of slow it down a little bit for me personally and, and, and bring that into this conversation so we can all understand it.
Well, I'll try and help. Thank you, Marcus. I'll try and help understand what we think of as the normal development timeline. The first thing we, we've been working on for the past two years is with the county and with this regional pump station. Obviously, we're not going to have the first CEO if we can't have sewer service. So that project at its timeline, we've tried very diligently to sync up the, the timeline for our first phase. So that, that development scenario looks like this, as, as Jeff was saying, we have to come back with a, a set of subdivision plans, which Matt and all the staff review. These are all of the, the development plans from mass grading to erosion control to water to sewer with Union County Public Works. And, and so we're, we're going to be into, our expectation would be the design and the review and the approval and the launch of that is at least a year long. And then you've got at least another year for that to actually get put in place to the point that you are able to go vertical with individual homes. And so if you then think about what that absorption might be for that phase, and Marcus, you might make a, a better estimate of that, but you know, if we're, if we are in market conditions that continue to allow single-family residential, at, at this point, we don't have any indication that that's going to significantly change, but we're certainly not going to build all of those houses in phase one in the first year. So that would be the actual third year of the development process. And then as we move forward from there, we're going to replicate that process in, in the rest of the phases. Part of this review process too involves a number of other agencies. So for example, the, the US Corps of Engineers is going to be part of our permitting process, you know, where we have stream, road crossings, those are going to have to be independently permitted from the town's review. This project will require a phase two stormwater design. And so e- each of these phases sort of starts to take on a life of its own. And while we might start the design process at some point during the construction of phase one for phase two, typically you're going to advance the construction and the, the building process to sync up with the actual market absorption rate. So hopefully that's a little bit of understanding. So this, this is not a two-year project, this is a multi-year project, and it's going to take a long time to get this many homes on the ground and built. As a comparison, it's not a great comparison because of the, of the recession, but Millbridge started in 2003 and it's still building. So number more, a, a fair number more houses, but it, it just takes a long time to build through this kind of project.
Let me, let me add, let me add a little bit to that as well, if you, if you don't mind, Commissioner Simpson. Currently, right with the pump station, we stay in major communication with Union County Public Works regarding the pump station. Land design was a major part of, of really, again, facilitating the communication between Public Works as well as their third party, which is Black and Beach, in really collaborating and, and making sure that the pump station just wasn't sufficient just to be able to put something there that doesn't open up to any more capacity. The, the end, end, end goal on this was to be able to actually have a little bit, a good amount of capacity to be able to facilitate commercial district in the downtown sector to bring in entrepreneurship and, and continual businesses that can come there. Right now, on, on the east side, excuse me, on the west side of 16, we're limited. We all know, and, and maybe we can talk about this a little bit, that Waxaw as a whole holds a 93% residential, a 7% commercial. That's where we want to be part of the solution, is to, to help facilitate bringing entrepreneurship and business to this area. How did we want to accomplish this? The pump station accomplishes that by being able to hold, open up at 50% capacity when it opens. That is going to be advertised. Now, mind you, they're having about a two-month delta, meaning that there could be some, some, some timelines here that might, might, might vary by about two, two to three months. But they are advertising, they were going to advertise mid-July, open for bid in mid-August. This is, this is public, Union County Public Works for this pump station. Put it before the BLCC award early September. Contract routing, execution aiming for mid-October. Put it for NTP early November. And then at that point, they would obviously award the contracts, and that's roughly about a one-year construction project to be able to bring it to fruition. That puts us being able to try to put this thing online in, in, in sometime in November to 2021 to January 1, February 1, February of 2022. And so that's where we're at with that. That opens for us to start planning on the north side to be able to bring in and start development and, and bring in new opportunity for the commercial zone in the downtown area. And so that's, that's, that's the crucial part of this that I do want to bring up as far as infrastructure, not just NC DOT lights, signification, roundabouts and so on. That's the importance that, that I do want to bring and have a conversation about the, the importance of this, this particular pump station. We are at full capacity currently. We will put in a new pump station, there will be a new pump station will open, and it will open with about 50% capacity for future growth.
And, and if I heard you correctly, you, I think Dale was saying that you wouldn't be able to begin your development or on this parcel until that pump station was in and operational, is that right?
Oh, I'm sorry. So what I was saying is, is that we wouldn't be able to have a house built in this neighborhood have service until that pump station was activated. And so the timing that I'm, I'm characterizing is all of the land development activity that has to occur and the town's process and the final planning and the actual creation of the lots, all it has to get done, then the house construction, not, that, that final occupancy cannot occur until the pump station is, is completed and activated. And just a point of clarification, this station, which is in Union County Public Works lingo, is a major regional station. It's actually abandoning an existing station that's there, which now is at, as, as Marcus says, is at capacity. And so it's, it's not just addressing our development, it's trying to actually look at this major drainage area and, and provide additional capacity for the town. And also, as, as the town's long-range plan looks at it, it's a key piece of the infrastructure for this area of, of the town and the county.
Okay, good. Um, can, can anyone, the other thing too is some- I, environmental concerns is that I've heard also from residents is like losing natural habitat for the wildlife or the animals there. And I was wondering if someone could kind of speak a little bit to, to that as well as, you know, is there any sort of tree safe area here? I mean, is all this could be clear cut? Are they going to leave? Are you going to be leaving, you know, the, the trees that are in here? I live in, in Lawson, and I know in the section I lived in, they kept as many trees and kind of worked around the trees to keep it more of a, a natural type feel as opposed to just clear cutting all that property and building up.
And I, I can answer that question, then Matt can potentially, if he feels inclined to follow up on that, that as well. First thing I want to point out is, is the number of BMPs that are on the plan. They stand for best management practices, which is a fancy acronym and phrase for drainage, stormwater control. And a lot of times you see on a property like this, you might have one, two, maybe three larger ponds, they could be a wet pond, they could be a dry pond, they could be bio cells or any number of different type of mitigations. One thing that we were pleased to see on this property was a number of BMPs being spread out throughout the development. And one way that this happens is through your PRD or your planned residential standards, basically cluster type development. If this project were, say, to be a conventional type subdivision and just carved out, you know, even at acre lots, under its current zoning, you would not get all of those water quality features because all of the lots would be within private, private ownership. So you would have a little bit more limitations in, in your stormwater control. You would have to provide some area for stormwater control. It just, you wouldn't have the ability to spread it out like you would in this, in this fashion. As I mentioned, with the planned residential development standards, it does allow for smaller lots. But what you get in return is you get the ability to have these green spaces, and they show really well on this master plan. You get to have those protected through some type of homeowner association, which we require, or, you know, public ownership. In some cases, of course, in this instance, our, our staff preference would be that it be maintained within a homeowners association, protected in perpetuity. That way, within those green spaces is the tree save areas that are required as part of the development. They have a requirement to save a certain amount of trees, and they have met that, they have an internal tree save of 50 acres throughout the, the development. And so that's what the planned residential development also allows as, as well. I know it doesn't necessarily seem that way, but it is true. If you carved it up into a conventional development, you would have more impact that way as opposed to the planned residential development or IE clustered subdivision that, that we- that, that we see here.
Could, could you just maybe exploit, just kind of, I'm just a little confused of maybe the terminology that you're using about conventional zoning on acre lots versus cluster? And is your way that you can maybe rephrase that?
I can, and in fact, I'm going to attempt to switch here. I'm going to take that off the screen and I'm going to attempt to pull up a different So I will share. Can everybody see this? This diagram here in the square? It's, it depicts a cluster subdivision versus a standard subdivision or a conventional type subdivision. So here on the left is a cluster subdivision, which is basically our planned residential development. And you see how if you allow for the smaller lots, you do get more open space within a protected area, whether it's through a homeowner's association or some type of public ownership. If you do it in a conventional development way, you do not get, they're larger lots, they are in private ownership, you do not necessarily get those same protections of that area over time as people can do, have different options of what they can do with those properties under private, private ownership in that fashion. You typically have more infrastructure costs, your street networks tend to be longer because they have to stretch out that infrastructure over a wider period or a wider area. I think in particular with, with this development, you quite possibly could have more stream crossings if you had more of a conventional development pattern. Don't know that for sure, but I would suspect that would be the case if it were developed in that fashion as opposed to a planned residential development. And I say cluster subdivision, they mean the same things and I, we, we're calling it a clustered subdivision in our new land development code, but it's still identified in our existing code as a planned residential development. And it is a tool that allows you to, to protect more of your green space in some type of fashion, either by sometime the homeowners association or in some public entity.
Great, thank you. I think that, that picture really kind of helped me to understand it better, that if you kind of group the lots together, you can preserve more of the green space between lots or in the perimeter and things like that.
Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
Could, could we add, could we add to, to, to this conversation? I'd like to kind of bring in Dale and Rob real quick to add to that as far as our green space as well as a quick, a quick note on, on some notes here from, from Randall on our side as well.
Maybe, maybe too, if you can address, are you planning on, on the site to clear cut everything so it's all barren or would you try to save the trees and work around that and what's there naturally?
Yeah, let's, let's, Dale and Rob, one of you guys, would you guys kind of speak to, to our natural area when it comes to, you know, our crossings, our floodplains as well, since you, you are the engineers that specifically know the ins and outs and we work diligently with, with NC Dean or and get into kind of that topic a little bit so we can answer Commissioner Simpson's concern here.
Commissioner Simpson, I would add to Jeff's commentary that if these channel homes with a traditional-
Dale, Dale, I don't know if you can hear-
And we were creating lots in which, yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, we're, yeah, we just had, you just broke up there for, on your first few words. If you can start over.
Sure thing. Sorry about that. I've noticed my connection is sort of going in and out here, so I'm hoping that'll, it'll hold. So if you can envision as Jeff was illustrating with those, that previous image, if all of these lots, basically the rear yards included all of these, what we refer to as riparian stream corridors, so that the lot lines ran to the center of the stream, they would be subject to the same kind of rules as we are with respect to any kind of impacts to the stream. So while they wouldn't be able to just simply go in and annihilate the stream and impact
Dale, are you there?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Are you, did you lose me?
Yeah, you went out again.
Dale, I feel as though you were going to make a really good point and right as you did it, you cut out, so.
I'm, I'm so sorry. So what I was about to say is the home, an individual homeowner whose lot extends to the center of the creek can clear cut to within a few feet of the creek, whereas what we're doing is that we're preserving what we call the riparian stream corridor. So it does a couple of things. We, because we're going to put this into the regulated tree save area and because it's a part of this conditional use plan, they will not have any ability to be able to go in and clear this. So this is going to be permanent tree save, permanent riparian corridor. So that the, the attributes of this, which also help in terms of sheet runoff from lots and stormwater, it protects that stream and that stream's viability as part of the natural water course as opposed to sort of leaving it to the individual property owner. And so nationwide, sort of this cluster idea, cluster provision has been embraced in a large way because of the environmental improvements that you get from that. The BMPs that Jeff mentioned, these are not, these can be aesthetic as, as, as part of the landscape and they're not just functional. And so the goal is, and the way we landscape and plant these and integrate them into the neighborhood, and what we would, what we would hope to achieve in addition to the tree save is that this would be part of the amenity for the neighborhood. So we're creating trails and that's the, that's one of the, one of the largest sought after amenities today is just open space. And considering what we've been through recently, people need more open space. So everybody on their individual lot and we didn't have these corridors, this community would have far less community open space to get out there and enjoy. And so, yes, there will be some mass grading. It's almost inevitable because of the topography, but in this case, the mass grading is going to be centered in the lots and we're saving all of this green space. As Jeff mentioned, there's thirty-three percent of this site that will not be built upon.
Great, thank you.
If, if I might add on to that, these environmentally sensitive areas that we are setting aside as, as tree save and common open space to the HOA, they also provide wildlife habitat in places for the animals to travel and to live and to maintain. Also, when combined with natural walking trails through these areas connected to the town sidewalks, provide miles of passive walking trails for the residents of this community.
That, Commissioner Simpson, that was Randall Tillman with our team, him and I together. I know it might show up as my name, but I don't, I don't speak that, that eloquently. So I just want to make sure of that. Sorry about that.
Excellent, great. I, again, I just want to thank the citizens for writing in. I hope I was able to address some of the themes that I was able to identify from their comments. And I would like to thank my other commissioners for letting me have as much time as they did. Thank you.
Very good. So at this point, Jeff, I'll go in concert with you. Were there any other questions from the commissioners? My first one I see is Commissioner Wesley, you're up.
Okay, um, thank you, Commissioner Simpson. You asked us many of the questions that I had, but I do want to just follow up on some things. First of all, on Friday, I went out to the property and just to look at everything and ran into some residents out there. And I know that earlier in the presentation, there was a letter presented by the HOA president, Art Meyer, and saying that the neighbor, the existing neighborhood had support of this new development, but since then that has changed and I have received an email which I forwarded to the rest of the board and to Jeff today. And I just want to make sure it's entered into public records since that other letter was included. Apparently there was, they ended up doing another poll in the HOA because many members weren't aware that this was going on. And so their current, their poll that they ended last night, out of the twenty-one existing homeowners, nine homeowners are against the rezoning, four were for the rezoning and eight, there was no response. So at this point, Mr. Meyer said that he cannot state that the Preserve HOA is in support of the project. And I, I will be happy to forward that email to Marcus and Melly, I need to send that to you for public record. And so to expand on that, I have some questions because I, I do know that these existing homeowners that are there that bought into this neighborhood originally, thinking that it was all going to be a neighborhood like their own lots. I just want to get some clarification. So there are lots in, on Waxaw Crossing in that first section that have not been developed, have not been purchased, I guess, yet, and so they have not been developed. I want to make sure it's, are those going to remain the original zoning that it is right now? So you wouldn't be able to go in and put two homes on each of those lots at this point? Is that correct, Jeff?
That, that is correct. The original phase one and phase two along Waxaw Crossing Drive, that is not part of the conditional zoning request and would, would remain as the existing layout.
Okay. And then the, that, that existing road of Waxaw Crossing, those, would those property owners be able to use the amenities of this neighborhood and would they be able to tie into this new sewer line?
To the sewer line question, I believe they would. As far as the amenities, I would defer that to, to Marcus.
Okay.
Yeah. Commissioner Wesley, I appreciate, I appreciate that. And yes, I'm, I speak, I speak with, with a lot of landowners out there as well and I was aware of your time, taking the time and doing your due diligence as well as others over there on Friday, which that's, that's, I really commend that. As I, as I stated in kind of quickly on my opening notes, when we, when we, when we purchased this property, the surrounding two hundred and twenty-five acres, we immediately went to the HOA to touch base with them. We wanted to ignite on them and hear their feedback as to what it was that we were looking at, knocking door to door and doing all that stuff. They actually have a really good HOA. They took, took it over, I believe, in sometime around the two thousand nine, two thousand ten timeframe, when everything was kind of stagnant out there. That current board still sits today, ten years later. Their participation, as you well know, is, is at the time was maybe about thirty percent. I went to the, the annual meeting to present to them our initial plan, get feedback, go back to our team and redesign that to hear their feedback. We did that in seventeen, we did that again in eighteen and again in nineteen, and I continue to have conversations with them today in two thousand twenty. We are also landowners in, with those properties as well. So the twenty-nine, the twenty-nine lots, we, we are the reason, I believe that we started selling some lots out there marketing. We paused on that to actually make this a community. So to answer your question, this, these landowners here are absolutely to be part of this, this, this development. They, they, the, the, I think they bought into this area with the intentions and unfortunately at the time, in oh-seven, there was no sewer in this area when, when they had really bought. And then all of a sudden, oh-eight, oh-nine, and ten happened and that madness that we had to live through kind of stalled everything that was happening out there. The property values and everything basically kind of took a little bit of a stagnant dive. We came into the picture in seventeen, looked at this to say this is part of Waxaw. We, we want to do something good for this and these, these, these people that bought these, these homes, that is obviously a major investment to, to any, any homeowner and any individual that actually goes into buying their own property. We went ahead and took it upon ourselves to try to work with them and put ourselves out there and do something right by this. I think properties have started to sell, if you look at the numbers to where that is. I don't have the exact numbers, Commissioner Wesley, but I could certainly provide you that, but I know it is a significant amount higher as to what the price valuation is actually selling there on the last few homes that have sold there in, in recent new builds on, on the existing phase one and phase two. The, they are part of this future community to be able to access that, that, that future amenity center that, that we have adjacent to that. Those plans really haven't changed. Yes, has it always been a hundred percent participation? No. Has it always been a hundred percent acceptance as to what's happening with these changes? Absolutely not. But communication is key during these times and I think the dialogue between the group out there and myself and our group has been very wide open and I think that's what Mr. Meyer was truly attesting to, to make sure that this was, this was the case at the time. And so, so in that, and I do understand, on top of that, Commissioner Wesley, I do want to iterate on that. A lot of the, the, the stuff that do, does occur on whether social media and/or neighbors talking with each other, want to make sure that we do discuss some of this misinformation that's out there. That scares people naturally. I mean, change scares people. And so when things like this happen, that, that does need to become into consideration because facts aren't always exactly extended out to when you speak in those terms. And that's why these type of hearings, as what you're asking, this is where facts can actually be presented and realization can actually be presented and gives us the form on both sides to actually be heard on a masses. And I put it out there, I've said it to staff and I'll say it to you. My cell phone and my time is wide open to anybody that has questions. I will visit them, whether it's Monday through Sunday, and answer their questions here in Waxaw. And it doesn't matter whether it's this property or any other property. I will put myself out there to actually sit and talk with individuals because I want the facts to be real and I want them to be known. And, and for that, I will put myself out there and I'll share my cell phone and my email and all of that to make sure that, that, that everybody can get the facts as far as it comes on what it is that we're doing. And I don't want the fear mongering to actually go out there. So I'll, 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 I'll leave it at that.
Okay. And so the other question I have is this, the pump station, will that be built regardless if this is rezoned or not? Has that already gone through the approval process with the county?
Yes, this, this will be, be built regardless of this development here. As, as Matt mentioned back in the original presentation, the county has been looking around for a, a piece of land. They identified in a, in a study back a couple of years ago, some, some different options and had, you know, some locations as they preferred as opposed to others. But of course, when they have an opportunity with, with somebody to provide them a piece of land to put a pump station on, they're, they're going to take it. And so that's, you know, what they, they've done here. And so that's, you know, what they, they've done here. And by the same, by the same developer here, Marcus and his team that owns that, that property there. So that project is, is, is moving along regardless of whether this project is, is approved or not.
Okay, and then final question, and I don't know if Jeff or Matt wants to take this, but regarding the road improvements that are going to be required. I think I heard Jeff, you say that you would require this to be done before issuing construction permits? Is that correct, or did I hear that wrong?
I will forward back to the conditions. So for the traffic light at the intersection of Rehoboth Road and NC 75, which is the, the main mitigation because of the number of crashes that were recorded there over the last five, five years, that would be required to be installed. And what that includes is, is the traffic light, and then of course, to get DOT approval of that would have to be the inclusion of whatever turn lanes would be involved in the installation of that light. That would have to be completed before their first certificate of occupancy is issued, meaning as we talked about before, before any one person can occupy the first house there. Now, they can do their grading, they can put their infrastructure in, they can build a house, but the house cannot be occupied until, until that mitigation is complete. That is also the same with the payment and lieu for NC 1675. They will have to make that payment of $172,000 to the town. And that would be prior to us issuing a certificate of occupancy. So those are the two conditions, other than, you know, the normal meeting the town requirements, following the conceptual plan, all of that, that normal procedural stuff that, that we would require. The last, the, the other one, the $428,000 isn't specifically tied to the first certificate of occupancy because that project is already a funded project that already is going through plans and some different machinations. So we're making that one contingent on the, the municipal agreement that we ultimately enter into with the NC DOT, and that would dictate when that payment would be made.
Okay, um, that's good because one of the, the common complaints we hear is that we don't put our roads in first before we allow for growth. So I like hearing that. And as we saw with Millbridge, that wasn't done until probably 10 years after they already started as far as improving that intersection there. So, um, that's good to hear, and, and that's, that's all I have right now.
Very good, thank you Tracy, appreciate the comments and the questions. And appreciate the team giving some very succinct answers. But if there are any questions, I have Mayor Protim and Commissioner Morey. Either one of you have your hands up that I could see?
No, my questions have already been answered by Commissioner Simpson and Commissioner Westlake. And they all mainly had to do with the citizens who live over there, the road conditions, how they would be improved or put in with regard to the school and the safety issues as well. So they've already asked and addressed those questions.
Very good, thank you for that. And Commissioner Morey, since they've already asked a lot of the questions, do you have questions to ask?
I believe a lot of the, the questions that I, that I had were answered in one of the or form, the only comment that I had had about the water pump there, how, how much of that can be used to service any future projects towards the south end of, of the town?
So I can, I can make the first attempt here, and then Matt can chime in if, if I'm saying something that's not accurate. But as I understand, there would be 3 million gallons per day is the capacity that that would be built at. And once it's online, now as, as it was mentioned before, there would be an abandonment of the existing pump station that is nearby. And so when this station comes online, it would be operating at about a 50% capacity, which would mean that there would be about another million and a half gallons per day that could be added to that pump station.
Okay, and just one more question, if, if you could possibly forward to me the person that we speak to at the county with regard to school and how what their capacity is and who is it we actually speak to with regard to when we ask the question of can our schools handle that load with regard to a project like that?
His name is Don, and I might butcher his last name, so I apologize, but it is Don Augrum. I believe it's-
That's fine, if you could, if you could forward it in an email.
Certainly happy to do that.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you Commissioner Morey. Jeff, I'm going to turn it back over to you since you're managing this portion of it, and I'll let you continue with what you have.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I have hopefully been able to address all the questions that the board has. And just to reiterate, of course, we've gone over the conditions now that staff has proposed and the, the developer has agreed to with the caveat is, is changing that, that word from match to be consistent with the submitted housing elevations, which we did agree to prior to this, prior to this presentation. And so just to go over our, our options again, would be a motion to approve the petition on August 25th. As with our other public hearings, there's still a public comment period to come for the next 24 hours after this is closed. That's required by state law for remote meetings, or when you have virtual meetings. The other option would be a motion to approve the petition with recommended amendments to the application if there's some change to the site plan or some condition. And then the last option would be a motion to deny the petition as presented. And so as we talked about before, this is a conditional zoning request. So it is different than a general zoning request. The main difference is when you have a conditional zoning request, you do a lot of the, the site plan review and the bedding of a project ahead of time. It is not the full-fledged engineering review, the construction document review with fully engineered plans. But it is, it is a very high level of review that does receive all of the, all of the comments from all of our different agencies who've provided that and are comfortable with the plan up to this point. When it does, if it does get to construction document stage, as Matt mentioned, you know, they get into some engineer, engineer drawing situations where you look at the vertical cross-sections of roads and things like that that could alter the thinking or the requirement or something like that, that you may shift something or, or add or remove something based on, based on that specific to engineering. But for the most part, you're able to catch those things in this, in this initial review. And as I've mentioned before, it's gone through four review cycles. And as I mentioned before, you know, it's, it's a project that started out. It didn't quite look like it does now. We had a lot of interaction with the developer. I'm sure a lot of it that the developer may not have liked. But we are at the point where staff felt that it was comfortable to move the project forward. As I mentioned before, the original application was back in July of, of 2019. They've certainly been patient with the due process there. But sometimes these are complex zoning requests, and they do go through a process, an extensive process. There is a process that we have in place with our existing plans, our existing ordinances. And we feel comfortable that they have made it through that, that process to a point where we feel that we could recommend approval of the project. So thank you, and I will certainly be happy to answer any last minute questions if there, there are any.
Thank you, Jeff. And, you know, I'd like to again, open it up if there are any questions from the town board. But I do want to express my appreciation, certainly for the development team coming in and being available to answer all the questions. But just as importantly, certainly our, our town staff in, in preparation for all this stuff. But in addition to that, I would like to personally thank this board for doing their homework, for getting involved in this process to understand it better, to ask the diligent questions. I commend all of you, thank you very much for that part.
So the one thing that the board just needs to make sure that you do is close the public hearing. And then, of course, you would move to any additional action on August 25th.
That'd be correct. So seeing if there are no other further comments, I'm going to ask for a motion to close this particular public hearing. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to stop the public hearing.
Thank you, we have a motion from Commissioner Simpson first to close a public hearing. Roll call, vote please, Mayor Protim McMillan.
Aye.
Commissioner Simpson.
Aye.
Commissioner Wesley.
Aye.
Commissioner Morey.
Aye.
Very good, well, thank you very much for that. You know, it's a little bit of a long night, we'll try to move it along quickly. And we have right now, the, we have new, no old business and no news, new business. I understand from the town clerk that we have a couple of comments under the next section, I, general public comments. So I'm going to turn it over to the town clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. We have received a total of 12 general comments. What I'll be doing is sharing this responsibility for reading these comments with our town manager. But first, I wanted to quickly go over the policy related to these comments. So basically, no comments can be past three minutes long, and the entire public comment session will not be longer than 15 minutes. So if there are any public comments that are not read, they will be incorporated into the public record. These are on a first come, first served basis. So I'm going to go ahead and get started. So the first public comment is Vera Cravens from 4506 Magnolia Ridge Drive. Basically, the topic is growth. Stop approving high-density zoning requests and destroying our town. The infrastructure can't handle it, stick to one house per acre. Another public comment was from Amy Bade from 8726 Maggie Robinson Road. The topic is no more apartments. Waxaw is getting too congested, we cannot handle so much growth. The next public comment is from Cheryl Boterick from 8406 Walk Up Road. The topic is destruction of rural Waxaw. I'm wholeheartedly against the apparent destruction of rural Waxaw by greedy developers who have destroyed the wilderness to pack up as many ugly developments in as they can. Everyone who lives here intentionally moved here to get away from the disgusting urban sprawl and congestion that has progressively been moving away from Charlotte, destroying every small town in its path. Please stop ruining our town. The next public comment is from Ryan Luthead. He's from 4121 Hoffmeister Drive. The topic is the horrible decision to sell parkland. I'm shocked to hear the board's decision to sell vacant parkland to developers. Waxaw needs parks to offset the out-of-control urban planning. I'm sure the board can find other ways to generate revenue to fund projects. Keep our parks. The citizens of Waxaw don't support selling parkland to developers. Keep in mind this action will have a political impact. The next public comment is from Lee Sheets. The address is 7608 Big Buck Trail. The comment reads, "We're new residents to Waxaw but have always enjoyed visiting even when living in Valentine. We were thrilled to find property in a home in Waxaw area that checked all the boxes, including being the, close to things like parks, gyms, etc. We are saddened to hear about the loss of the partnership with the YMCA to build a facility near Curriton. This was a big pro on our list when comparing potential homes. We also have become disheartened seeing all the community threads about the lack of planning to ensure our roads and traffic flow can keep pace with the amount of growth happening. What steps are being taken to adequately protect Waxaw's great community and infrastructure?" The last public comment I have to read is Laura Humphrey from 4700 Red Trail Hawk Lane. The topic is rezoning and growth. I'm writing in response to concerns that I have regarding all the rezoning and growth in our nice little quaint town. I have lived in Waxaw for 20 years. I have drawn to Waxaw because, or I was drawn to Waxaw because of its quiet little country town feeling. The growth that I have witnessed over the years, and most recently, is terrifying. Please stop letting this happen. The traffic in Waxaw is already so bad, it's not even bearable. And it will not only get worse as you continue to grow. The roads are nowhere near big enough to accommodate all this growth. Please stop doing this. This growth continues this rapidly. I will be selling my home and leaving, as were many other residents here that I have talked with. Jeff, it's over to you.
Thank you, Melody, and just let me know about our, our time.
Certainly.
Get to that. So this next public comment is from Chris Mothershed at 7811 Antique Circle. And it goes, "I'm hoping you can answer the following questions. If houses use more resources than they pay for, how are more houses going to help our tax base? Have we been lied to the last three years? If you sell candy bars for less than you bought them, you can't make up for that loss in volume. We, the people at Waxaw, purchase parkland with our tax money. How do you sell it without even a public hearing or polls from the public on the matter? People move to Waxaw for the environment and cheaper taxes than Meck County, Mecklenburg County. We put up the, with the commute because of those features. If you put more houses in, it will drive your taxes because all you said, houses use more resources than we pay for. The Waxaw bill is gone, and then the commute is worse. How do you plan on attracting people this far away from Charlotte with no real incentive? I understand everything we do costs money. We are trying to pay for what we need." What are we trying to pay for what we need to sell land? I would like specifics. Obviously, projects have been priced out because I assume you didn't sell the land to still have enough money to do something. All in all, I feel this board is not representing me or Waxaw the way they said they would. You are disappointing the people that cared enough about you to choose to represent them. The next comment is from Jonathan Weisberg at 2622 Cricket, Cricket Crow. "We moved to Waxaw from Apex, North Carolina, 10 years ago due to the small-town charm and proximity to a major city. I am concerned now that the small-town charm is lost. The approvals granted to developers and lack of planning is alarming. The traffic is becoming a major problem and poses significant safety risks. The lack of parks, sidewalks, and access for neighborhoods to the downtown retail area is a problem. The lack of smart commercial planning is going to challenge our town to generate the needed tax revenues. Let's start making a better plan." The next comment is from Sarah Claprod at twenty-seven twelve Southern Trace Drive. "Please preserve the green spaces and historic areas of Waxall. I fell in love with the quaint southern charm of the town when we first moved to North Carolina eight years ago. Unfortunately, overdevelopment is starting to make its terrible mark upon our town. We need to preserve the unique characteristics that draw people here in the first place, our downtown and our green spaces." Next is Mary Farren, fifty-three oh one Camelia Lane. "Please, please, please consider not bowing to the revenue bug without making what we have already, our roads, schools, more efficient and user-friendly. Please do not sell the parkland. As we have found in these last few months, green space is a way to reconnect to each other and our world. If you have a plan in place, please let us know so we can support you going forward." Thank you for your time. And lastly, we have Candace Definis at eighty-three thirteen Willow Branch Drive. "As a former commissioner of the town of Waxall, I'm extremely disappointed and disheartened that during the July twenty-eighth meeting, our town board voted to sell many town properties. I absolutely disagree with the sale of any of our park inventory property. Waxall, at my last count, had ninety-five acres of park space, which was still below the amount of parkland we needed to have for the size town we have become. Please see the reference data provided to you with the master park plan. It was never part of the plan to sell any of our park inventory space. To sell fifty-two point three acres of the ninety-five that we have is a gross act of negligence by this board. To sell half of the park space that we have in this town without a proper public hearing and input from the citizens is even more despicable." And that is the end of public comments. Thank you, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you, Melody and Jeff, for reading those in there. Appreciate the public comments and look forward to maybe further demonstrating some of our plans to, to the citizens. With this, we're going to move on to the town leadership reports and, order commissioners, if there's anything that you want to add. I have, I have nothing on my list from that. Any last minute comments? You can do that here. I see Commissioner Westler.
I just want to reiterate what Commissioner Simpson said earlier during the public hearing. These comments that were just read were general comments, but I want the citizens to know that we received all the public comments that were sent in regarding the two hearings that we heard tonight. And so we have read them all and your voices have been heard. So just because they weren't spoken tonight, we all have heard them. That's all.
Thank you for that. Commissioner Morey, you're up.
I just wanted to briefly, thank you for clarifying or putting out what you did as far as the Y, YMCA. And I would caution folks to try to get these facts before, uh, making commentary that is hurtful to the town and to our goals.
Very good. Well, thank you for that duly noted on that. Appreciate that. Seeing no hands, go, I see the town manager. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just to follow up on Tracy's remark and just to remind that, that we will have a twenty-four hour public comment period after, after this meeting, meeting ends and staff will forward the additional, any additional comments that we do receive once we conclude that twenty-four hour period. So they will be seen by the board.
Very good. That's a, that's a good note to understand that, you know, we'll still receive those. So thank you for mentioning that again. Any other additional comments as far as the town leadership? Seeing none up here on the screen. We have nothing to report on closed sessions, no topics scheduled. So at this point, I'm going to see how many of you want to race to make a motion to adjourn. Do I have that motion?
So moved.
Hey, motion to adjourn. Any comments? Roll call, vote please. Commissioner Morey.
Aye.
Commissioner Westler.
Aye.
Commissioner Simpson.
Aye.
Mayor Protim, will you close us out?
Aye.
Very good. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for all your diligence in going through this entire process. It's, it's great to see. So thank you very much. Everyone have a great rest of the evening and I'm sure we'll talk some more. Good night, everybody.
Night, everyone.
Night.
Be safe, everybody. Be safe.